So, Jeanie Vinyl is coming at six tonight. She texted me. So she will have the guy who does the timber hut with her as well. So if you have any questions, you can feel free to go ahead and ask.
Steve Ross that are at Mark Ross down there. Scott, it's that big journal they've got. There's a lot of stands like.
Are you guys looking for the village board meeting?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, come on in.
Yeah, we are. We're in the timber hut.
Oh, you're in the timber hut, great, come on in.
So we're here on Jeanie Vinyl.
Yeah, yeah, she said that you guys would be with her, so great.
Yeah, so we're just in the dance with her.
Yeah.
Thank you. There she is.
Hi, John.
Hi. I'm here in the meeting. Trusting the fire thing.
Yeah, lots of depression every once in a while. And I think the board has their question. These guys probably have slain. I love your dress.
Oh, thank you. My daughter's like, when did brochures come back this time?
Brochures are. Hey, Jeanie, do you want to talk a little bit about you? I know had a conversation with Judy Kendra about maybe having some funds available to help us. Because that would be great because Ben Villanueva is our DPW crew chief. And so he just walked out. So this is, yeah, Chip, Chip is our attorney. Yeah, do you know Jeanie Vinyl?
No.
Okay, so Jeanie Vinyl is our legislator, just recently reelected to for a second term.
Yeah, thank you.
Your office is in Snyder.
I think I'm in a not candlestick office and I don't like, like other, like certain places people go there. I think it'd be more synergy if the person that works with me was there. I have a little friction on it. It's too much that I'm here and it's supposed to be how it seems.
Yeah.
Just to make it, because it's like, it's like permanent.
Oh, that's good.
Kind of thinking about that, but it is.
Yeah. Um, yeah, because Ben will be able to direct you better when you get him to talk about kind of what the needs are over there.
Yes. Yeah, and this is the perfect time to do it because the next one is only 30% contract. You want the contract. It's just saying that you're, we're giving the money.
Yeah.
The town is giving the money. And then, um, so we'll have the great, what you want to know.
Okay, great.
Are we talking before the meeting or is it the meeting is at seven thirty?
Um, we'll do, we're gonna do, we start work session at six. So I'm gonna have you guys come right up at six because you're our only guests here this evening. So you're right out.
Thank you.
Um, and then, you know, if you want to either start off with the Island Park for the water, either before or after these guys.
Yes.
So whatever you want to do. Do we know if, I know I saw Christine here yet?
No, I haven't seen Christine.
Okay. So, um, legislator Jeanie Vinyl is here this evening. She texted me right before the meeting. So, um, so we'll do some introductions and also the gentleman from Timber Hut. Is it Timber Hut?
Timber Hut, yeah.
Timber Hut, yes, this is one too. We'll be doing the building of the Christmas market buildings.
Oh.
We're also here, so, and, um, yeah, so. So it's a little early still, so. Yeah, Christine, like kind of. Ben, I asked Jeanie to talk a little bit about, and you need to talk about the water situation on the park. So, so we can do that while she turns. We can talk, well, I was hoping, I was gonna maybe wait till Christine gets here.
I think just back to meeting, give her a minute.
Okay.
If you've expressed, and then this is back in my mind, it didn't like, there was the need. Get some money for it. That, and I, between the time we got the opportunity to, when it came, it wasn't next time. So call this, that particular time, there was something that's, I'm just gonna think of myself to, to run that money.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Like, did we, uh, hit opportunity to get money for it for the village for the water? It's coming up full blast that it's going towards something.
Improving the water service to Island Park.
Oh, ours, I was saying.
No, that's, that's what else.
No.
Yeah. Water. And we're, we'll have to be here, at the theater. Our in here right now.
Again, it's over the.
Take the meter on here. Can you do that?
Say no. Don't make eye contact.
Jeanie, you've been known to the Christmas market down in the city.
I, they, they went down for pretty long, because a lot of people were going down there. I went down before they were started up. And go down there again, so it's, it's gonna go Saturday, maybe, you know, we're gonna be close for the weather. But, um, and I thought Sunday, we probably wouldn't have a good turnout, but I had seen it before this two. Both of those two people are in Canada, running those. It's very hectic with the, uh, the advertising, which is allocated for Christmas markets for next year. And hopefully we are at the event for next year. And it's gonna come to solve the Christmas markets and put in there, so help, uh, you know, others as well. But I think it's, it's kind of just because they're starting up and it's from zero to something. It's harder than, you know, different parts. That's what we're doing with these guys, it's gonna be a lot, they're gonna be here, but it'll be an anchor. And the more is better. It's not that, you know, that you don't want to set one Christmas party, you don't have a whole bunch of Christmas parties. Yeah. I like the way you guys have it set up so ready.
Yeah. Keaton takes care of all our.
Yes.
Set up the tech for me.
We're getting this kind of set up next year for the county website here. They don't have anything like this. They keep the computer. I mean, you can access it from your own computer and access their website. Yeah.
You, it's your office?
No, not my office, we have, no, I mean, Tommy Legislature.
Oh, it's kind of, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, no, my office, we have everything, yeah.
Yeah. I'm surprised they haven't, don't have that set up yet.
Yeah.
Just like the past two years of.
Yeah.
Remote meetings and. Because I, I feel like a lot of people didn't have it. And then when COVID hit, I think, you know, everybody kind of jumped on to Zoom and the tech. And we had to scramble here a little bit because we weren't really set up for that either.
We had to make our own rules along the way.
Yeah.
There was no, um, there was no manual for how to do it. It was, you know, all of a sudden, you just had to immerse yourself in figuring out how to, how to make government continue.
Yes.
It was, uh, it was a difficult early spring.
And whether to record the video or the audio or transcribe or, you know, what you get for FOIA requests or response, you know.
Yep.
Yeah.
We had the.
We did have the first one transcribed.
We. We, I think we had to have though everyone transcribed. Yeah.
I didn't all have to do it.
Yeah.
Our transcriptionist, she's still working on.
And she has.
She's still working on it.
She was, uh, she just emailed me, uh, a week or two ago, a question she had for me. So, yeah, it takes a while. That was one of the, one of the new ones.
It's not cheap here. Like, whatever ages long. Yeah. It's a cost guy that we just did the take.
Okay.
FOIA system.
Okay.
Because of the cost.
Yeah.
Looks like with it, it's not like. You know, being a screen, only certain people have, through that, recording this. Where this.
We could get started. Why don't we get started? Why don't we start with the water and we can fill her in. So everyone, this is legislator Jeanie Vinyl, Jeanie Vinyl, since everyone's got their name tags on.
Okay.
So.
And I just was coming here for two reasons. One is with regard to 30,000 allocation that I was able to get directed to the Village of Williamsville for improvements to the bathroom at the park. And that was because Mayor Rogers had just mentioned in passing the problem with the bathroom, but during the plumbing problem and during the year, uh, sometimes they have to close it. And they don't even let the jolly boys use the bathroom for the, you know, old home days. And so I thought that if there was an issue, I wasn't sure what the cost, whether it was a million dollar job or $2,000 job. Or I figured it was more, but that's the most I could get for this year for that. And I thought if it doesn't cover the whole cost, that we still will cover, to figure out what the cost is and getting somewhere on it. And, uh, so that, the process for that is if you're able to take that money, that, uh, the contract would be presented from public benefit funds. And then it would just have, who's taking it exactly, like the Village of Williamsville. And you put in there what it's for, and then you submit that. And then, uh, I think you have someone run it around that doesn't get stuck in Neverland. And then it goes to the controller and they issue the check, um, to the group. This money, is it the money that's a bonding kind of a thing? It's given and then on the assurance that you'll use it for that purpose.
Reversing.
Yeah, it's not a reimbursement situation, so.
We really, 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 really appreciate it. Because our bathrooms, we just remodeled the interior, they were in awful shape. Um, but it's, you know, that's on the front, but underneath what's going on, Ben can talk a little bit about it. The type, I think, doesn't, can you talk about how it runs across the creek?
Yeah, I mean, we, our water service comes out of a ton of ambers, which are not, not very prime. Why don't we have our own here in our own building? And it's a undersized line, it lies right across the bed of the creek. So it's visible, visible.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if there's own back of things.
Yeah. So same range of, you know, snags, logs and all of it. And freezing, we do blow it out, we, you know, we do that out of that. Hasn't happened yet, but, um, because of capacity issues, you can't flush a toilet, you can't use a hose or that same. This is, those are very long ways to increase the capacity of the water on the island. So everything functions the way it's supposed to.
All right, well, that will go to some.
That's been fifty, sixty thousand dollars, but.
Yeah.
Well, they're getting.
Okay, and then in the midterm, there's gonna be, uh, there should be, there might be budget excess. Because of the, the budget cap, they didn't want, they lowered the tax rate to lowest in seventy years on accounting. But it was, uh, there's still a surplus of like maybe hundred forty thousand, but the, hundred forty million. But the thing is, is that sales tax, um, is, I think, very volatile. I don't think that's definitely known because number one, um, like the controller wrote that in August, the sales tax was eight, ten point eight percent less than the previous August. This year was the first year ever that internet sales after the holidays went down, it's been increasing. And one of the biggest drivers of our sales tax in Erie County is, uh, new car sales. And with the inventories being low, I wonder what that's gonna be. So they had allocated a slight increase to very small, they thought conservative increase to sales tax. But I don't know, like I felt that I voted in favor of the, we reduced the budget like somewhat from what the county executive wanted, but there's still an excess. And so anyway, bottom line is, is that either that excess will be needed because there's not enough sales tax, but if it's not needed, during the midterms, each legislator might have opportunity to get money for their district or community, uh, projects. So if there's something that you guys need, the only trouble is, is like, you don't get that much notice, like sometimes you get days, you know? And so it's hard to communicate. So if you, um, have things that are on your list of things that you really do need, I feel very strongly that our district, uh, was, my district was just District Five where we live. There's not one county park in that district. It's, there's Grover Cleveland, which I don't count as a county park, that's not really in our district, and the Dog Park. The general plan is like a real park. Elleke Creek isn't, is in District Six, so literally we have no parks. So that's why I feel strongly that we should be advocating for money for our parks, even though I did get money, 250,000 for Central Amherst Little League to put their bathroom. And it went across the, the piping there went across Whirly and it cooked into the cheap water line. And it was something that was needed for like fifty years. So my husband said my motto is gonna be Jeanie Vinyl gives them message. So they have, and this goes a lot of the time, but anyway, so bottom line is, is that that's, so if there's something that you can communicate that there's needs and different levels, you know, like it's, there's no guarantee. But if there's money, I won't have noticed unless I know at the time, so why are these here? Or if there's one person I could reach out to, whether the mayor or someone else, reach out to something like that.
Yeah, you can always reach out to me or if it's parks things Ben too is a great contact with. So if you want to maybe give her your.
Yes. Yeah, because I want to, my one. We never get, we pay the taxes of any district. But we don't, I don't feel like we get our fair share of things, you know? Obviously, including, you know, property eradications of commonwealth, but on the other hand, we still should get our fair share.
Yeah.
And we don't get police, uh, we pay for police. It's like sixteen, something like sixty percent of property tax goes to the sheriff's department. We don't get police from sheriff's department.
Yeah.
You know, and we don't get, there's so many things that we don't get in Amherst because we provide our own police, we provide our own parks, you know?
Yeah.
So that's why I think it's unjustified, you know, ethically, morally, for advocating for most I can get for Amherst.
Yeah.
So without, without holding you to a figure.
Yes.
I mean, rosiest picture, what kind of order of bag to.
Okay, to be honest, to tell you what my true goal is, is not for Williamsville per se, but like Amherst needs a sewer thing that's like thirty, thirty one million dollars. And pushing so hard to get that, which is a long, never falls border, and it supports Tonawanda. And that's a huge thing. So if I get that, I won't be able to get anything else for a long time. You know, Ben, we have. The thing is, but the reason why, I think it's what they would hope, because it's like, they, they can't, like corporate malls, success value went down to ten million from, it was ninety million and then went up higher than that, now it's down to ten million. If they did that, they could develop that area and there's a few other places that need, that kind of, that, that. That infrastructure is, it's blocked so many times a year at like four different points. And so many people sewers back up and they think it's their own line, it's not, it's that, they're using it. So it would really help a lot if we could get that. So I've been trying to advocate for that. So that's like, that's my wild, this rosiest dream, which could come to reality. If it doesn't, it'll be something more like thirty or fifty thousand, something of that nature.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
That could get the wins. So that if I did get, correct, I got the two fifty for that, but that was on a public, originally supposed to be, uh, like a bonded thing. It turned out not to be. And then I, like a little ridge, I get their money a couple of times for their, like their car. You're putting that's a strong name, but it needs to be preserved. So, um, but I'll keep going for, but it's, I really appreciate it, having Mayor Rogers to talk to because, to, you know, be our advocate for Williamsville, which is, you know, in this district and a supporting part of this district, obviously. So on the Christmas markets, I am glad that you guys are willing to do it. I just wanted to give you just a total background really quickly, it probably came about because I told Mayor Rogers, so I was, I don't know what she told you guys, but. Um, so basically, two thousand seventeen, my daughter and I went to Germany to visit a friend who's a journalist there that we're close with. And so she took us to the Christmas markets and I said like, there they have in Berlin eighty six Christmas markets, not just one. They have a bunch of major ones and then, uh, you know, then eighty six total. And, uh, I thought like Buffalo is perfect for that because we're so good at festivals, our weather is the same. It's actually, you know, relatively temperate in December. And we have, it's, uh, you know, there's so many reasons I thought it'd be perfect. So then when it came about that we had, uh, money for to stimulate the economy through, uh, what is from the county. I asked, could we get money for, to, to fund Christmas markets in Amherst to, um, to support local artisans who are like in Main Street? Who are like some of the most hit musicians and artists and so forth, most hit by COVID. You know, they don't get, uh, their amount they got from things didn't cover so many things, I mean, they were so strongly hurt. And so anyway, so we did get that money for that. And the idea of it is that in, in this short time, like two years or so, to be totally, that it is not something that the, the government puts money in over and over again. It's like a one-shot stimulus, okay? And the idea that is to have, um, two Christmas markets, one at the Island Park. We had all these other locations for more economic development, but for one reason, like at the main terminal, Senator Kennedy, he's all in favor of it, although the state doesn't want to pay any money towards it. But they wanted it there, but there was so much work that needed to get done and it was for safety sake. And, um, the Clinton Valley Market was also really examined and excluded for the cost would be more than the cost that they paid for this. Anyway, so it came about that Amherst, uh, was really behind it and they wanted to use the, um, the, the museum, which actually is a really perfect site. And this, I always wanted, I think, such like a magical kind of place anyway, Island Park, and this would go along with it. So, um, anyway, we have a group of people that all have agreed to help run it, one of whom, uh, they're working with the Shelley Shats, my opponent. We got. So after the election, I reached out, I told the mayor, I said, you know, dear Shelley on Facebook, and I wrote her a message, like, you would be perfect for this, blah, 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 blah. And she's like, I think you sent this to the wrong person, but I've been thinking about you, thinking about you. And you should have sent it to me because I would be perfect for this. I said, it's sent here, Shelley, I told myself. So we've been so close since then, my daughter says you're new BFF. And so like even today, we talked, so she's, um, doing like the restaurant part because, um, the restaurants, like she's been at, uh, um, they, you know, the buffalo, who, who tasted buffalo since the beginning. And also at the beginning, there was a restaurant like that down on the outside. So she, like as far as, she's been in that kind of thing the whole time. And then another guy, Rick Pickerson's been working with me, who's really in with all the marketers and stuff. And, um, so we have a group of other people for the musicians and all that stuff. But anyway, the main thing is to getting the infrastructure of it, is to make it so that there's some benefit to the municipality. And so when our, um, the museum, they wanted to have lighting, they really wanted to do it. And they're gonna have their, they have like makers, which are people who make things, uh, they, I've heard that term, I didn't, but they, anyway, so they're gonna have their makers, they're gonna be there in their own existing cabins that they have. And if they can't have them there, they're just gonna put like, you know, like, uh, like sort of like that, like people who make things like that, so they do it in the museum. So the idea of doing it, the two of them would be like town and country, like this would be the town and more villagey looking places. And then the other one would be country and more country things with more makers and crafters, someone else who's just doing all outreach to churches. They have performances at the place and to do, and crafters to sell like quotes and things like that, like not small like this, a different kind of a group. So all that, so the fundamental part of it, of what the county is paying for, is paying for all the equipment and all the purchasing these, um, buildings. And so the idea of it was like, we did a lot of research on, um, the buildings, like as far as to have somebody, because like a real Christmas market has like, like a real magical feel, like a, you know, whimsical, like another, like you're in a place, like it's a destination unto itself. It's not just a bunch of tents put up with a bunch of people sort of that. It's like the lighting is really important and things like that. So, um, anyway, this particular company, I, I found them somewhat by accident, but really it's the only company that we could find that really answers all of our things. And they're from, um, from Williamsville or Amherst, Timber Hut, it's like these three guys. And they, there's other people, but they, um, they have, the reason why they're good is because the quality of their product is perfect for this because they make temporary buildings that can last twenty or thirty years, okay? Number one, and they're really high quality. And they also have an architect, design architect and engineer to do the site work. Because the part of the thing is gonna be the site plan, to do, um, the site plan for the permanent lighting and temporary lighting and the location of it and the need for how many bathrooms and everything else, okay? So they're gonna do that as part of the thing, is that the first part of the contract, and the second contract, which I was hoping that you would allow it to be a contract with the Amherst, impossible. And, uh, that, that it could be with you guys also, but that Amherst has, is willing to do it. And the other good thing is, is that the museum has a five oh one C three for accepting donations, uh, which would be that they're gonna be working with us on it. So this way, there's a five oh one C three that's associated with it. And, uh, but one of Amherst's goals is not to have a lot of work for their town people at all. And because like the county was saying, like Amherst is gonna want to store all these structures, but Amherst, no, we actually, our highway department doesn't need to store a whole bunch of other stuff. So part of the contract with them is to provide the storage and that every year, the election and the taking down of the storage. But also to allow the municipality, for just the cost of the, of the thing, uh, to, like, for example, museum wants to have several of these stay up year round. Um, and then they also would have access to have them erected at different times during the year. But if you guys want to have some other thing that would be for that, so it would be something that is a really good structure, so why not use them as much as we can? So, uh, but there would be costs which would be part of there. So their contract is gonna be to have the design phase and then, which we would have some input on. And the, um, then, and then also then the construction, uh, of the things. And then the setup and the taking down every year and the, and for the contract will be for two year period. And then with the idea that the thing itself has to be self-sufficient by that time period. So they get, and they're a really good company as far as that, like you said, they have, like the one guy was working on a sports thing in Boston. I don't know, they're one of the sports, and they're like high quality people in that area. And they're all, and I'm a Democrat, they're all Republicans, I think. I don't know. Everyone that's working on this is either a conservative or Republican. But anyway.
The word thing is that we're all local.
And they're all local. It's a local business and they're willing to do it, like a lot of places, because there's a lot of bakeries that they're actually putting together what's going to be done. A lot of the contractors wanted more, everything to be, just tell us what to do and we'll do it, which this is because it's at the beginning, you can't just, they have to work, it has to be a cooperative, you know, thing. So I think that it's gonna be really good. So what I was wanting is to, I guess I could work with Ben on this, is that they would do a design phase and then you would tell them as far as like some of the things that, um, that the mayor said was that you guys might be interested in having more permanent lighting? Because like the museum wanted that so they could use the facility for longer during the, the year. Instead of, you just want to get stopped real early. And then these guys have, like the design engineers, they do the site work to say like, this is where it would be. And then, you know, there's some work to get, you know, as far as you're saying, yeah, that's, that's, no, that's, that's another way. And then the idea of the Christmas market would be that it would be set up that it would be beyond, because the mayor said she, that the, uh, playground is still used during this, during December. And the death and can't be part of this, you know? And then so that it would be set up with some kind of entrance where the, the design to, um, start way beyond that. Like you guys, we have the, you know, the bushes where there's, like there's the decorative thing, just like right at that, just beyond that.
But to kind of make it more delineated.
Delineated, it'll be along that thing, so we just have their back.
Yeah.
And so that the idea of it would be that hopefully the rent would be at a real low cost and not for profit, be running the thing. And, uh, because the idea of it is to bring, but it would be left like this, the not-for-profit and that would be like, you know, have insurance and everything else. So, so long as it's agreed to, we had a list from them of all the equipment that could possibly be, and the town would possibly be purchased, the generators and different things. Um, that technically the, um, unlike most contracts, this is what you had raised, just mentioned, or one of you guys mentioned, unlike most contracts where you do the work and then you get paid for the county. This money will be given first to, that's why I was thinking of the town debt, because they have more, uh, like as far as the, the town will get the money and then have to pay off the bills on it. Instead of the county paying it out directly, it can't be paid out from the town. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if you guys want to, I'm partnering with the town in Amherst, I'm sure we all are. We do.
There's no problem. Yeah. And then as far as like with regard to, is there a way that the rent could be nominal or lower, would the rent be, what about that aspect?
So just to clear, so what I told them is you were looking at the Saturday after Thanksgiving for four consecutive weeks.
Until the Sunday before Christmas.
Okay, so, um, and in the, and the, and the shops would be open like seven days a week.
Yes.
Around a certain hours, so people would come. Um, so I don't know, I mean, I typically, you know, so I'm looking at old home days because we run. So I don't know, I mean, I typically, you know, so I'm looking at old home days, because we run the island to the dollar boards for the old home days of that. And what do we, what do we charge them for that? I know it's like.
Like, because we, because we've done it, we we had done it like two different ways. I think we had done it like, it was a reduced rate. And then they paid like costs.
Right, for the guys to, for your team to come in and clean up.
Ultimately, we did, we did like our our reconciliation of that a year or two ago. And we determined that. The rates to have the guys do those unit costs. Were actually adding up to equal to or more than the all island rental. Which they were initially resistant to. The value was like, well, now you're just charging us too much money. So actually returning the.
So but I think an all island rental is five hundred.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we can work out.
Yeah, we we we'd work with you. I mean, because I think we all.
And then also, I was thinking that this way, it would be like, that would like sort of. Be because like you're, you would be getting some fixed things that would be improvements, you know? And you also get the, the issue that is another thing that they wanted at the museum. That they have internet better wifi, you know, in every place. So when you have your farmer's market and everything, the people can more easily use their chips and, you know, whatever.
It'd be really nice, yeah.
So we had a question, when you said seven day in the week, what time does it start?
Okay, so then it'll be like during the weekdays, it would only be like, say, from four until. Like until, not until eight or something. Yeah, just for dinner. And then on Saturdays, Friday night will be a little longer and Saturdays and Sundays will be all day. And this way, it's the idea, and also I wanted to tell you guys that, like, the first year, a hundred fifty thousand is gonna go to visit Buffalo Niagara. With a regular contract to the county, they're going, and the guy who runs the pet killer, he has gone to. Every ornament on his house is from a Christmas market in Europe. He went fifty six times to Europe. To go to Christmas markets, because his old job required him to go to Europe. So and he's in charge right now of visit Buffalo Niagara. So he's like really done well on this, you know, so he's loving it. So he's gonna start as soon as the final contracts and I'll give them. I'll give them to your attorney to just to leave the county, send trouble getting the contract. So. For this, because it's unusual kind of contract, they hired a new guy to do contracts over it. Anyway, bottom line is is that he is gonna contract all tour operators within a two hundred mile radius. And work with the local hotels and local restaurants and stuff to. Put tours together for people like for two and three day tours. So the idea of these Christmas markets isn't just to get money from each other. And like one of my goals is to be Amazon business, that's my. And the other one though is to bring other people here from that region. So he's gonna do like do a lot of work on that. So that is just with the contract and that's a hundred fifty thousand. Kind of work with advertisers and do like really good advertising like they do for the back to business and other things that really like in that whole two hundred mile. Of Buffalo, so it'll be, you know, that's the idea there is to bring in. You know, so like that to create hotels and other things that it would be just like one of the booths is gonna be just to sell theater as gifts, but also theater. And and, you know, artists as well. So that's the point. I think it's really good. I think it'd be good to have the town and the village work together on it because. We're all one Amherst and I think it'd be beautiful like little, and they're gonna do the design. So the design that they made for our, for the Williamsville. And which can be utilized in Williamsville, but it won't be sold in other parts of the country, you know? And the same with the Amherst one, it'll be a unique design to our place. So it gives the feel like this is the Christmas markets in Williams, so it's a Christmas markets of town, you know, town and country. But they're here to say, because if they're really good guys, they'll be working on it. You know, they just be working with you then maybe. And and also with nature, as far as like having the thing, so they'll design everything. And then and then I would just ask them to come tonight because they have questions for them, they're technical and also introduce to figure out what's the best plan to make it happen is. You know.
Really quickly. Good evening, my name is Bert Anderson. We don't have a presentation. To share at this point, which is fine, because I don't think you have enough time for it anyway. But I thought it was important that you, we introduced the principals of Timberhut. I'm Kirk Anderson, the founder and president of Timberhut. To the far right is Ken Clapper, you're far left, is Ken Clapper, he's our AIA certified licensed. Architect and he is a very well credentialed individual. And then Jim Daley, he's our director of commercial projects. And between the three of us, we coordinate a group right now, we're down to. Four fabricators in our fabrication shop, but we have the ability to. Staff up and ramp up and employ more people from Erie County, Kettergast County as well. So. We're really have the capacity to do a number of cabins in a number of different ways. Cabin structures, accessory dwellings. If you're welcome to look at our website, I'll leave you with a car release, you will. And we'll communicate. We're here for questions.
Yeah. They're designers and even just have like any thoughts in some ways, is that something? Highly qualified people in our community.
So my name is Tim Clapper, principal, self writer of Core Art, but I joined Timberhut Captain Company. As, you know, the designer, the architect, you know, one of the principals. I'm from Williamsville, I mean, just down on Hillside Drive. So Island Park would be a great opportunity for us to, and also the Amherst Park. So our, my goal is to, you know, look at the Island Park and the and Amherst Park. Design a, you know, Christmas village, both in different themes. But again, look at the infrastructure, you know, many contacts, we've been, we're together, you know, definitely work together. As far as the additional things besides structures that we need to do for creating these Christmas villages. So we're looking forward to starting up and, you know, interacting with the village in Amherst as, you know, designs and, you know, the images come out of us and.
Also wanted to say that one of the things that's the towns requiring an artist program. And they're gonna be doing that artist program and this company isn't bad old, so they're still in a growth stage. So I also think it's important, not only that we're building this to help. You know, businesses, but we're also helping this business grow. And we're setting a manufacturing firm and they do like really high quality work with high skilled people. And so I think it's really important that, you know, that's a good aspect of it too, you know, so the money also stays local. And so I think it's a good thing, you know, they've been really helpful because it's been, they were first started way back when. And everything takes so long, like I relatively knew the government. I only had the two years, you know, it's everything takes longer than you're expecting, because I'm listening to talk about it.
The the holiday market is on its south part. They have kind of a rotating vendor list, is that the plan for this too, or is it gonna be static?
This one is gonna be static, because we're trying to get people to do this. And I also wanted to, we're working, the Oshai Foundation. Is interested in helping with Michael Lons for businesses to like build up the inventory. And Dave's Business Markets guy, one of that fellow, like you said, he's meant to borrow, he hooked me up with that guy. And he, they, he's like sells more Christmas, he sells the forty largest retailers, maybe you're familiar with them. I wasn't familiar with them, but he like showed me his place and everything. So he's willing for businesses that don't, that wanna sell Christmas. Like decorations and things like that, or major scenes or other things. Kirk Anderson's like, this is great, because you know, I think that things made in Asia, so here I said, well, except the ones that come from David. So but he's willing to, for businesses that need it. And and just out of community service is like give the same prices that he sells like for things, because he knows like where things sell a lot. But to sell that he gives to Walmart and Target, so like, which is. It's like sixty percent less or something like that. He said then the next retailer, they they people could buy it where else? And he's willing. To have them stock up daily, because like one of the barriers to entry for a small business, because a lot of these like markets that you see now, our Christmas markets are just starting. When you see like business or Taste of Buffalo, so many come to big places like Allentown that aren't really local companies anymore. Because they're the only ones that can really, you know, build up the stock and everything, because it's so expensive. So he's willing to do it, so like a daily charging of a daily. That's like a huge benefit to a business to have good stock daily and not have to, because like, where do you buy, have red and have green, and the red sells and the green doesn't sell? He's willing to do that and help people, he's gonna interview the ones who's gonna help help people to figure out which things to sell. So that would be like. The people that wanna do that, not everything is gonna be like that, there's gonna be a variety of products and. That's why I wanted people like Shelley's gonna do the picking of the restaurants as far as for the quality and the ability and everything. And then like Rick Pickerson's gonna help with picking the, or rather do, like picking up the vendors. Who this then, who this product, but also other vendors. And we have other people for things like that, so that this way. They can, you know, it'll be successful. And so the guy, the guy, Dave's, Dave's Christmas partner is gonna help with picking those people and helping those people succeed. Because, but he said that the main thing is the foot traffic, that's why there was a little pushback to not give any money to advertising and. But he said that it won't be a success if there's no advertising, if you don't have regional advertising, it won't have to be a success.
So we're gonna go around by about the twenty third.
Yeah, exactly. So you wanna have it that they people are already coming in, like buses, the senior citizens, you know, coming in for the, you know.
How many huts are you envisioning?
I think that for that location, at the first year, it's gonna be thirty huts. As far as, and then some huts will be, is that right?
Thirty, but they're all various of different structures depending on, you know, they might be. I'm gonna say numbers here, but they're not, you know, but like maybe ten, ten by ten ones, maybe another ten, you know, ten foot by fifteen. Ones depending on the type of vendor and then there'll be, you know, I think. You know, accessory structures that might be needed. So the idea is to create not all thirty of the exact same ones, but a multiple, multitude of them, so that the bulk of. Very similar, but then the beast man's there structured that needed per site. An island park, you know, we have the stage or the back, you know, the back building there that can be used. Where Amherst is different. So each one will have, depending on how the guy gives to create a village, you know, in this different feature one, but so that be. But like around thirty, you know, give or take.
Yeah, so it'd be like half food and half non-food, like twenty percent food or less. Now, is it also gonna be alcohol? Because, okay, because in Germany, they have all the.
Well, ours is gonna feature four, there's gonna be alcohol in general, but like. Four drinks, like we have the mulled wine, okay, we have a wine manufacturing, but we also have dairy and we also have apples. And then we also have, what's that, third, oh my gosh, apple, like something else that's warm, but like apple cider will be like served with an alcohol and unregularized. Yeah, yeah, like they, if they had, but anyway, it's like milk, because there's such a dairy industry for hot chocolate. And that's just my favorite, this is, but they have, but mulled wine.
Yegati, you know what that is?
What is it?
Yegati. You have a German, uh, German tea and then you put yegati in it.
The food service, like what, what kind of, what is that? Food service vendors, what does that look like? It's like, you know, it's like. Donut vendor or is this like full blown menu, like food truck like?
It'd be more like, like the idea of it is like each little thing is selling like the one thing, okay? So there will be like ones for sausages, like our guy knows that the electric side, he says a big food concern, you know? And so I asked him, so he gave me these nice sausages, they want sausages that don't feel bad or whatever. And so he has this really nice salmon sausage. I said, we want the things he considers nice as well. So this has a nice Polish one that's made, but there's a nice, like a chatting one that's fully cooked, so you can't like ruin it. So we tried that, I would give it a taste to try out different ways. And he, so we'll have like things like sausages, but there's also at least one. Place that sells more things like a dinner kind, not dinner, but enough to eat for dinner. But the idea of it is sort of to walk along and to try different things. Every day there'll be like churches there with fires and then regular, you know, paid performers and other things. So it's like to make it. So that it's a real, and even along there'll be places where people can eat standing out with some feeling and different things. So that's why these guys, it's so important to have them, and they've done like so much work before they even got a paid job, dollar one on anything. It's like, but they 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 have it so that they're fishing all this, because I think it looks like, it looks like, yeah, if everything is like thirty places that are all the same that were made out of, you know? It's not like magical, you know, it's not like the one in my mind that like whimsical or something, you know, it had a theme of it.
Jim was down at the One Town Towns yesterday and he had some comments for Gary Towns.
Yeah, so. Thank you for having us, even regardless. First of all, if 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 I can add a little something to the rest of that, one of the, one of the things that I think we've had a lot of active discussion about was also. You know, being able to create an opportunity for people that does not detract from establishments that are already on Main Street.
Thank you, that's where I was at, yes.
First, you know, first right refusal goes to anybody that's interested in having, you know, some duplicity in the corner. We wanna have some, we wanna have some redundancy in the park, so that we're not taking away, we want support. And and Gene also said, you know, the the goal and objective for this is sustainability within two years, right? So we need them to know that this is something for everyone, this is not. Three really handsome guys that all chose to wear blue pants tonight, you know. So we're not here to try to create something and then run away with it. We're trying to, we we live in the area. This is a legacy project, right? We're we're, we wanna look at how to help the infrastructure. We wanna include people that have already invested in Main Street. And surrounding streets, giving them an opportunity to also participate in this as well, without taking business away from their their way for establishments. As far as the the South Park location. You know, I, it is cute, it's small, it was uncomfortably tight. Yes, um, had nothing to do with the weather, it is, it's just a great first effort. And I think. As much as in my business endeavors, I like to be the first and the best, so that I'm the one. That adage pioneers get the arrows and the settlers get the land really rings true. I think if we can use these establishments. Opera House, South Park, Little Bumber, to get people exposed to what a true Bavarian criminal market looks like. Then when we have this establishment in place, that's done correctly with. Infrastructure and well thought out plan and pathways. You know, it it just seems like it's gonna be a great destination.
And what do you say like about the the path of light or something like that?
This path of light, if you. Right, so as 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 G mentioned, right where the marquee is, remember the bush. We kind of envisioned that natural pathway, kind of leading us down. But we wanna take advantage of the opportunity that we have to get power from one side to the other. But we don't wanna be doing gaffing tape and so. Well, better way to make sure that we can illuminate the structure, but also provide power to both sides. Than to have plenty of nice, you know, colorful trellises with these great Edison bulbs that are bright white and, you know, or not bright LED white, but old classic warm. You know, just classic traditional bullish. But here, you know, as you go down the pathway, just to make sure everyone's got equity to power. Everybody's space is equally illuminated, so that there are no issues with, you know, being able to see the vendors, being able to see the path, being able to see around and navigate. And and I think that's what Island Park really provides for anybody that's been in the South Park, South Park Street location. You made a lot of friends very quickly, just because you had to keep your hands up to keep boxing people, right? This affords us a lot more room, although we wanna have. At least thirty structures in there, so that we give people plenty of opportunity. To spend some time and and some money there.
And just to don't tell on what Jim was saying, the, and not to pick on the the South Park market, but all the buildings are very uniform. They're they're very functional and well built, but they are very uniform, brown sided. We envisioned something that would enable to enable our structures to be each. Functional on their own, basically, we would take the functionality and the design. Uh, functional on their own, uh, basically, we would take the functionality and the design. Uh, and, and replicate that through the thirty structures, but then we have an opportunity to put a unique. Williamsville flavor on each building and it doesn't have, they, they don't, they, that's where the, the separation begins. So each structure can in turn be its own unique, kind of magical to you, to coin her phrase. Uh, experience. So it's a, I think we have a, a very good. Synthesis that they can have.
And then also we're gonna hopefully that have something to offer like the Main Street businesses. To sort of like, this is a good design to like put in front of your store, to sort of like continue the thing through there. And then for the transportation between the two markets, if it didn't stop at different places on Main Street so that, you know, people can go on Main Street stores. You know, so it is to like AJ's uh, from the Amherst Chamber of Commerce. Is really into this and is really working with me to get, you know, other, you know, he's, he's, he's working on it like it's his own too, you know? So it's like, it's, it's to help the local businesses in any way, shape or form and that's that's, and to help. The idea is like there's two to three nights people coming in for two, three nights, things to go to each market. And so that's why ours will only help the South Park little ones, American Droll will be there, you know? I want them to succeed and our other ones to grow too. And this will, uh, everything we're advertising for this is gonna help them, and it's not like a, a small pie that we, we're taking a piece of the pie, we're going to.
Well, I will say, I only had two concerns when I, I, we talked and I didn't have all the pieces of it, that's why I wanted you to come. Because I don't have the answers um, to all those questions that we heard tonight, comments, but. Uh, my two concerns were parking and it sounds like that's been addressed because you're doing it the business days, this lock gets very full. The town lot, so you're starting at four, if that's a non-issue. And then my other concern was just inequity to the existing businesses on Main Street. And it sounds like you pretty much have that covered and I know you may, you may be married too, you're also committed on that, so I think that uh.
Yeah, I was, I mean, that was, that was really, I mean, the, the one, you know, the one common refrain that we hear from. The Main Street businesses, like even going back to setting up the Lumper Heart Festival and stuff was, was, you know, well, great, you're having it down. Oh, great, you're having that on the heart, that's not on Main Street, right? And so like, that encouraging that spin off. Activity, you know, uh, is crucial to winning the hearts of minds.
The, the last thing that we wanna do is cannibalize.
Yeah, and, and I, I totally understand that and I don't genuinely believe that that would be the result. I mean, quite the opposite, I mean, we went, my, my family and I went down to South Park once, right? And one of the biggest things that you can knock against them, you know, the, the arrows kind of thing, right? So there's literally nothing there, like, I mean, you go there. And then if you're not, if you're not a gambler, you go home, right? So, so in our case, you know, it was like we were there for, I think it took us twenty minutes to get there, we were there for maybe an hour. And then we're like, well, okay, it's a beautiful day, we're out now, right? So we went over there. You know, and we kept shopping on Elmwood. Now, if Elmwood had been immediately adjacent to the thing, we wouldn't have even gotten in our car. Right? So here we have a situation where we can, we can pull that, you know, population back on the Main Street with some encouragement, some thought. You know, before they just jump in their car. And I think that's, that's a, a key piece to sort of always have, sort of omnipresent. You know, whatever, however we structure this thing is to just sort of encourage that.
So we wanted to sell like same day, um, you know, restaurant and theater. Like sort of like New York City, like the, you know, same day theater places you can buy, and then also as gift, like, you know. Those like as a secret behind other, like one of the things in envisioning business is security. And in front of it will be just selling gift certificates with the videos of each, each of the restaurants, you know, and that will be all of it by Main Street restaurants. To some people, this is more like eating sort of small thing while you're walking, and then you wanna go somewhere to actually eat dinner or like more, you know, substantial meal. And um, then it would be like all the, our local restaurants. So I, I think it really will be centered into our region, you know, that's what they're trying, that's what I wanted them to do. Not some person who just wants to slide together something real fast, you know, whereas someone who's actually thinking about it. And this one, we're gonna use this to sell these around other places, like to sell their, you know, their structures, they're probably snack cabins, but like. Um, you know, some strategies or something so that they have, but um, uh, but this way to help them, so otherwise the art, the designs for this.
With there being that many, thirty or more, um, there be uh, like an information booth or anything like that, okay?
That's where they'll be selling the gift certificates to the restaurant.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I was saying is that um, I know you answered our concerns to the, the WBA, the Business Association, my head. But um, you know, um, kind of, you know, myself and uh, trustee Sherman and the. People go to the WBA meetings, kind of represent the interests of the village governments and, you know. Back, back the other way, they try to tell us what they might need help with. So um, you know, I don't necessarily need to sell this to them. But also at the same time, I need to, them to know that, you know, we're not pilfering off of Main Street, that we wanna trap people.
With you to one of the meetings and sort of like to try to get.
I think that, that would, that would definitely help, yeah.
That's a great idea, actually.
Not the soup store, but like that idea of like maybe focus like this, you know, for containers and ways, right? So like with mulled wine, they could have that and that could be sort of on the circuit for the aspect.
Even if there was uh, during the, for the information, if there was somebody from the WBA, maybe they rotate. We could volunteer just to get the word up, you know, go visit this place or this place, you know.
Also sell to go to the restaurant that night, or like maybe a five dollars off or something, but then also that they could sell that gift certificate as a gift.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna have a really great wrapping paper that you move to this market and little boxes that you move to this market, so they could buy that like for the, you know. Uh, fun part, you know, gift certificate for, that's their Christmas present that they're buying, you know, like the idea there is to buy Christmas presents.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I believe it could, it could work.
Yeah.
I just, I, I, I wanna alleviate the concerns of the business. Right.
You haven't done that much like publicity of it because everything is like up and down, you wanna sell about something without everybody being on board that is the. The people love it, but AJ, like I said, he's like, I've got a really good sponsor, wants me to write for some party, he's like, okay. Or it's like, you know, he's, he's really, you know, pushing it because he thinks it's gonna be a good, you know, for area businesses as well.
Keaton, couldn't somebody from WBA sort of be part of it?
The information booths, you know, somebody's there rotating.
Maybe they can rent. That's who we would wanna really hand it off to, I would think. So their involvement would be pretty.
Well, the museum, they're gonna be with both of them together, so they, like the, not for profit for the museums, but use for accepting charitable things.
Right.
And not for profit, just go around this, so they could have a person on that board of that that's involved with some of the things, like. They could be in charge of like, you know, whatever, like small business, because like, like Rick Vickers, and he's really in with all the food as, as gift things. You know, like for, he does the artisan ones and that, and he's also really into people who sell at all kinds of fairs all over the, the, this, the multiple states around here. You know, he's a sort of a natural ombudsman type of a guy. So like Mayor Brown chose him to go talk about problems people have with businesses, so like he's the one to take all the people's problems, and he, he just. He's just wrecked it, he's, he's, I've known him for a long time, but he uh, is very, he, so he's natural for that, but as far as like the standing structures. It would be better to have somebody in this group that was like really representing the standing businesses, like a, like a frickin' mortar business, like as opposed to like.
Yeah.
Itinerant businesses.
In fact, when uh, trustee Sherman and I were at the last WBA meeting, we uh, I did suggest that, I suggested that maybe. There'd be a representative from the WBA who actually works, you know, with the committee.
Or ask them who they would suggest.
I would ask them, would it suggest, it just depends on how, how much time each business owner or representative might have. Um, I mean, Ellie Grant Hour would be great, uh, Maria from the Irishman would be great, but it all depends on how much time they have.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so, I mean, I know at this time of year, the resources will stretch. But, you know, it depends on where you're getting the committee really going, you know? But, well, it definitely helped with the word out, that you are looking for a representative to, to maybe work uh, uh, on everything.
Especially even not even just the restaurants, but the frickin' mortar actual stores that sell gifts.
Absolutely.
That's like a really, they were hit so hard because like, you know, Walmart was allowed to stay open and they were closed, you know? So that would be like frickin' mortar stores that sell things, because I don't wanna take up all of your time, I'm really so glad to. And to see you in person and everything and.
Yeah.
Good to meet everyone.
I know, good to meet everybody. Okay, so I will um.
So keep, let's keep it tight, I know it isn't until next year, but there's probably a ton of planning.
And I think you'll need access, once we get the Catholics, I know you need access to, you know, you know, whatever they need.
Okay, I hear the words, with the village and maybe we'll. Be back, comments if you'd like, you know, come forward and share.
Well, thank you all for coming and all your information, I think cleared it all for all of us.
Or any suggestion or that if you have no one's I'm meeting, it's up to you.
Yes.
Be appropriate.
Great.
Good seeing you.
You too, yeah.
How's, how's your daughters here going so far?
Um, both are doing well, I mean, you know, they actually did really well actually, so.
Okay. Yeah. Well, no, I just know his daughter, Hannah, goes to school with my son. So I, I didn't recognize him at first until you started speaking. Yeah, and then I sounded in, I'm better with voices, so.
Are you related to the clappers that used to live on Creek Road?
No, well, they still live on Creek.
I thought they moved.
No.
Yeah, Jeff.
Yeah, my uncle.
Oh, okay.
Clappers have been here for, I don't know, I'm almost fifty, so over fifty years, so, then, you know. Jeff Dave, my dad's dumb clapper, um, we're still on Highland and my grandparents' place, so we've been.
Well, I figured it's not the most common names.
No, it's not.
We'll talk for you at the level.
We'll do. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that was great.
I, I would offer that five hundred dollars for. My comparison to thirty thousand dollars for a one.
I'm, I'm with you, right? That's what I see, yeah. I mean, I think that, you know, and it's, it's a community event.
I mean, it is five hundred dollars a day.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, for a month, yeah.
It does say, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we can definitely talk about that, but I.
With all the updates, they're exciting, right?
There's a place, there's a place to meet the middle.
Yeah. All right, so, um, so that's that, so that's good news, um, correspondence, um, how much time do we have? No, actually, I do wanna share this, I got a really nice um, Christmas card for the gnomes, I don't know if you've seen these. Melissa Warner said, if you wanna look at it more, pass it around, uh, if you drive up Evans where the triangle is. They just sound like a great job. So I just, but, but it's part of correspondence, I thought I could sit here and I could read like all hundred and fifty emails I got. And then I could like pass the torch to you, Matt, and you could read all like a hundred and fifty.
Forgo that.
We, we will, we will forego it. I'm just trying to get some loving.
I think we've all read plenty.
All right, okay, uh, so grants updates, Keaton.
Uh, sure.
The agenda is, I'm, I'm always doing this, we can, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the agenda, it's pretty straightforward, so. And I have, does everybody have that packet? Um, that from the last meeting, if not, I have a copy of it, it was the one that Judy gave us, it's got Tim's recommendation. So I don't know if you wanna grab that and have it handy for the public hearing. Okay, Katie Grant.
Sure.
Okay, so um, grants updates, uh, we're in the waiting period for the CFA. Uh, hopefully in the next uh, week or two, we will know whether or not we receive several grants that are within the CFA category. Including our um, our grant, uh, that would cover the cost of hiring consultants to revise our community plan. Our WQIP, uh, which would be for conducting sewer improvements. That would be a total of four point seven five million, and then our LWRP for specifically the dam study. Uh, that would be about fifty thousand dollars and um, hoping to hear information on all of those within the next couple of weeks, as I mentioned. Couple new things on grants, we um, applied for a grant. Uh, for the Ralph C. Wilson Junior Foundation, the Design and Access Grant. Uh, what we did is we um, we applied to have a Greenway manual constructed. Um, and the Greenway was part of our comprehensive plan, uh, as of its twenty fifteen uh, revision. And our idea is to establish a safe and healthy recreational route to the village with access to all of the beautiful park and open spaces. Um, we submitted that grant just a little less than two weeks ago and hope to hear from that within maybe a month or so. Um, and we do have good news, more good news, uh, we received the fifty thousand dollar grant for the um, fitness court. So it is now um, in the hands of the Parks Committee. I informed uh, trustee Ute, or I'm sorry, deputy mayor Ute, uh, didn't mean to downgrade you there. Informed him just, uh, just a week or two ago, so he's gonna work with the Parks Committee on that. I can have some information on that specifically. So um, if we accept, um, the schedule. Would have the fitness court built, all done, ready to go for people to use by June. Um, so be in and ready to go. We would have to store the equipment, which would be delivered uh, sometime early in twenty twenty-two. And that would be about a fifteen by fifteen square foot spot, which uh, I talked to Ben and he said that would be. Uh, possible for us to store all of the equipment, uh, covered up and everything uh, at DPWA first, so. Uh, so that problem was alleviated. The uh. Um, so yeah, it's really in the hands of the Parks Committee and how they see it within their parks plan. If the Parks Committee really wants to move forward and accept the grant, then it would be up to the Village Board in January to expend the funding. Of the remainder of the cost, which would be about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
I, I sound, I, I calculate that to be a hundred and thirty. Because of the. Sixteen thousand dollars worth of.
Of concrete, yeah, so about a hundred and thirty after concrete.
So, so to that point, I mean, I'll just, I'll just throw out there, because I haven't talked to the Parks Committee about this yet. Um, but there's, I, I'm concerned about the timing. It's very fast and site, at least in my mind's eye where this is located, isn't prepared to receive it. Because there's a lot of moving parts with regards to sports courts, site demo and playground and, and all these other sort of things and, and. This one. Shall we say unexpected, after you, is now suddenly the, the wheel of majelis turns. The, the other thing is, in, in adding up our current assigned fund balances, budgets for this year, next year. You know, potential grant monies from the state and current and proposed expenditures. This hundred and thirty thousand dollars was not really in the. In the scope until a couple of weeks ago, and adding it up and including that, we fall about a hundred and ten thousand. In the scope until a couple of weeks ago. And adding it up and including that, we fall about a hundred and ten thousand dollars over. And so then the question becomes, what do we start sacrificing? To accomplish this, if this is something that's really important and desired.
So if I may interject, I wouldn't say sacrificing because we are going to sit down in February and do our budget.
That includes that.
It includes what?
It includes a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the budget.
You mean for adding in an additional in this budget season?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the what's, it, it adds in what we've allocated the two years, last two.
Right, but I'm saying, what if we then as a board allocate adding in another hundred and ten into the park?
That's what we have to do.
So and, and so that, you know, I, so I wouldn't say it's impossible because we've done it in previous years.
Oh, no, no. It's based on, based on current projected fund.
Yeah, right.
We fall a hundred and ten short.
Okay.
On, on the list of ones.
Right, but as of June one, we're starting with a new budget. And if we in February decide we want to put in another hundred and fifty into our parks.
Yeah.
Then we don't fall short at all. So I guess it comes down to like, do we want to just say thank you, but no thank you to the fifty thousand? Or do we want to embrace the fifty thousand and get this in and put in a hundred and thirty thousand, even if we have to budget for it in February? Because we're all going to be sitting here. Everyone who's here now is going to be sitting at the table to talk about the budget.
Right, well, and so, and so I, what I've done is I, I haven't heard that from you yet, but I, I sent, I sent this thing off to architects and said. Take a look at what's included in this and then sort of try to peel off the redundancies of equipment that. Was originally in sort of the, you know, conceptual self-love or play structures. And, and then try and fit that square into a plan. Come back to me and tell me like, what's the cost of your equipment? That we can add this to. I will say that I am confident. That what they're going to strip out will not be offset. So the cost of their equipment will be, let's say, maybe twenty or thirty thousand dollars, but the investment in this, in this equipment will be. So, um, I, I'm not saying any of that to try to kill it. I'm just saying, these are the sort of the realities of pushing and pulling. The thing that, that makes me, let's say. Hesitant is.
Yeah.
Is this a, is this a annually offered or is this only offered right now or is it?
So if we, if we accepted the grant and had a different time schedule placed on it, would that make you feel more comfortable? If I, if I went back and told them that, uh.
That was a reality because I, I just, I, I'm concerned that even if we did want to do all of this, that we may not be able to meet their timeline.
Right.
So what timeline would make you feel more comfortable?
Like the fall?
Second half of twenty-two?
Yes, more so.
August, maybe.
Yeah, fall. I don't know, like late. Late summer, early fall.
I mean, we'll have to, I mean, the, the biggest, the biggest hurdle is getting the bids out and back from sports courts to get a realistic timeline for when they can start and finish that work. Because we need to be able to model that area and have it ready to receive new stuff. So like, once, once we have that piece of the puzzle, then we'll be able to firm that answer up a lot faster.
Okay, well, I, I, I'll contact them tomorrow and I'll tell them that the board feels more comfortable with. Couldn't, couldn't feel more comfortable with accepting the grant, um, based on a June through. Late summer, early fall installation.
Yeah.
And saying okay to the funding sometime by June first, which is the new fiscal year. Okay, I can do that. And to answer, uh, Christine's question, uh, this is a foundation grant. Um, those go by their own timetable. There's really no, um. Yeah, they, yeah, they just kind of do it whenever they want. It's not on an annual rolling basis like, like state grants are or federal grants.
That's one of the reasons why the supplement popped up out of the blue.
Keaton, how quickly? Are they going to be able to put this together again? I know it's very fast.
Very fast. Um, they can do it. Um, I don't have those notes in front of me, but it would.
I remember.
Take a matter of days.
Yeah, see, that's what I mean, though.
Yeah. I mean, that brings up really, some really good points. And, you know, we're just not to accept it. Now, if we, you know, if we're accepting it and their terms are their terms, you got accepted by this, we might have to say thanks, but no thanks, because it just doesn't fit. They might be open, so maybe just ask them.
If their construction schedule is relatively brief, then they don't have a lot of argument to say, let's delay it six weeks.
Right.
Because they're not, you know, it's because for them, I, it's clear that they're about the, the media coverage. You know, because they, they made it clear that they, that they're trying to get next number of these built and they want, they want exposure and they, you know, and everything. And yeah, I mean, is it ideal to have an outdoor exercise fitness area, uh, become operational in the fall? Not really, but it's not that.
We've had a really good fall.
We had a spectacular.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, even with, with eight mile an hour winds, it was sixty-seven degrees.
Yeah, right up until the storm came.
The one thing too is Keaton, I just want to make sure that we kind of look at all of the fine print, because I know in the past, when we've taken things, like all you said, video for example.
Sure.
Kind of.
Yes.
Um, the fine print wasn't looked at and now we're kind of beholden to something that maybe we wanted or we wanted to be. So let's just make sure that, because sometimes, you know, when, when these things are seen too good to be true, sometimes.
They are.
They may be. Um, so that's all.
Okay. So I'll get with Judy and we'll look at the fine print when she returns and I'll get those answers to the board, uh, on the timing and schedule as soon as I can.
Refresh my memory. Where is this company out of? Where are they located?
Um, the headquarters is in San Diego, so, uh, the, uh, woman that we've worked with, uh, to get to this point. She is based out of Jacksonville, Florida, so, um, they kind of, um, I, I don't know if they're like a, a remote company, but they do have, um, like offices. A couple of different areas.
Is there anyone in New York State who already has?
Yep, Rochester has it.
They do.
Video that I showed in.
That was Rochester?
Yes.
It's close to, I told Keaton, it's close to where my sister lives.
Oh.
Right off of, I think it's the five ninety expressway, Cops Hill, if anybody knows Rochester that well. But it's right on the, right on the fringe of the city. It's in this quote-unquote suburb, but it's a, it's a huge part. And it's got basketball, baseball, soccer in. Oh, by the way, I think they eliminated a couple tennis courts to put in the fitness, uh, facility.
Did your sister use it?
I mean.
Does your sister use it?
No.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, we should call and see.
And they're also, they're building one next year. Uh, I forget, just outside of Syracuse, so. So yeah, we're one hour away and a couple hours.
Cool. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, anything else?
For grants, that, uh, that's all my report. Thank you.
So we'll get into, um, so Chip, you probably have no updates on one, two, or three.
Sound updates on both cases.
Okay, all right, well, just, I'm like, I'm just leaving them out there as a reminder. Um, the other thing I want to mention is, so, uh, deputy mayor E two, myself. And I'm.
Yes. I have been, I don't know if you had any conversations in the last.
Well, well, we talked, yeah, you were on the Zoom, you were on the Zoom with us, yeah. So I just, and I think, you know, we, we kind of brought to it, Matt and I, that the board is pretty much in favor of taking. A portion of that property and using it to relocate your two side yards. Um, probably, I, I asked for three years. Instead of the two, so I think they were going to discuss that with Paul and see if that was even an option. But have you heard anything back?
I haven't heard anything from them. I mean, you know, we're negotiating. We will be expecting them to.
They were, they were going to put together some type of a, an agreement, um, that they, and then we would get a chance to look at it and respond in a three year.
Yeah, he asked like, you know, if we get, if we sent you something, is there like, you know, like a mandate kind of thing? And I said, well, you know, just the way he feels the government turned here and assuming he's actually had something and it was approved by the board. The, let's say, the earliest date would be whatever it was.
I think you said February one.
Yeah, just like.
We need twice in January to get something going, but, um, just so, and we will be paying the taxes on that too. I know there was some discussion about that, so we'll have to do that as well.
Just to be clear, you just asked for a three-year term?
Um, well, initially they had given us two with the chance and I just, I feel more comfortable and, and the reason I said that is because, um. You know, in the, uh, two years from now, this board is going to have, I'm, I'm guessing probably some turnover. And I, I just didn't want to stick a green board or a new board with all of this, but oh my gosh, we've done negotiate with this goal now for this property. So I just wanted to ask for that extra year to give, um, any new members who are here the chance to kind of get up to speed and.
And we.
That was really my reason for.
Yeah, and we explained, we explained to Dave that, you know, like, because he had put in the, uh, I think Dave Chios, the vice president as well. Uh, he had put in there that it was like, you know, a, a ten-year agreement. And there was like a two-year minimum with a one-year escape clause kind of thing. And so, you know, to Dave's point, she's saying, well, can we make the two-year, three? Just so that we had, we don't have this something drop on us. And, you know, Dave reiterated to, to, to both of us what he had said originally, which is like, you know. It's not like there's some sort of time bomb on the two-year mark for them. It was just like saying, they don't currently have any plans, he says, but you know, things change. Now, at Saint Hogan, we've also been actively pursuing the other side of this, which is property acquisition, alternative locations, permanent homes. And, um, while I think there is some positive feedback that we got in that initial conversation. It too probably has a two- or three-year time period on it. So these things hopefully should coalesce in a good way, especially if we have positive and recurring movement in that direction. So that when we get to that two-year mark, that three-year mark for this flow, we're not just suddenly homeless. Like, we actually have a, like, a target. And I think, and Dave seems, at least currently, very amenable to. Being kind of a little freewheeling about it and everything. And so like, if, if you, if you got to three-year, one-month mark. And he says, okay, we've got a plan for year four. And said, oh geez, you know, we're about two months away from signing a contract on like this permanent thing. I think they would work with the board on that as well. They're not gonna, they're not just gonna flip the switch and kick you out. So, um, it, it, at least today in twenty twenty-one, that these high-level conversations. All the right things were said. By all the right people and in, in very positive sort of, you know, reassuring terms, so, um. Uh, I think, I personally, in the two meetings we've had in the last two weeks, I didn't hear anything negative.
No, I didn't either.
I think everybody understood what everybody's trying to do. And, you know, we lobbed it out there to Eslo too, say, hey, you know, we are looking for a permanent home. So if you catch wind of a property with this kind of scale and this kind of, you know, proportion and whatnot, like. Let us know, because you might have a, you might have a client, you know, so. Yeah, I, I was looking to see something. I mean, hopefully he gets calls here, you know, with the holidays, we'll see.
Okay, and I just, I just want to quickly touch base on, um, my Twitter account. I did make some changes that the board had asked me to make. And I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with that before I post anything else. It took off the police logo and it just says, uh. Mayor, you know, you can all look at it. But if everybody. Okay, so everybody ended up okay with what I did. I talked to Chip about it and Chip gave me some, um, some guidance from, you know, from a standpoint of, of legality, so. I just wanted to comment on that before. All right, yes. And, um, I guess that's it. So Matt, you're up.
I guess we already did on. Let's skip right over last year.
Yeah.
We just did on CPW thing, so. I'm done here, all this.
Amber Symphony, extra funding, so we have, talking Judy. It's supposed to, it should be her. Art and Culture, we did meet Thursday, um, and they're very enthusiastic. Art and Culture and Diversity, I will say. And they're willing to take on the, uh, the project. Williamson School of the District and the students to paint.
Guide that? Great.
So we can take that after.
Cool.
And then, uh, we may, we're, you know, moving forward, uh. Open to be able to do those things and, and we'll talk about ASO and see where all that goes. And there is some interest in doing one other event, although we haven't.
So the, the wall at the pavilion. How, um, how are we proceeding with that? So when we, we last talked about as a board, we were going to encourage people to submit designs if we knew of artists or students or whomever. And then we were going to take all those designs, kind of maybe pick a top five, and then we were putting those out to the public to do kind of like a survey or a people or something of. Like, pick your, pick your top two and then that would be the winner essentially, what we get paid. So is that, so are we still keeping that separate from Arts and Culture Diversity?
Uh, I did not discuss that with them.
Well, that's kind of what we liked it. I mean, I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly, it certainly could be, if they're, if they're willing to take it on.
I mean, that, and we could still do the same thing, so people could still submit to Arts, Culture, Diversity, that, you know, but they could kind of take it then over and foresee it. You want to maybe ask them and see if that's not too much. I don't want to put too much on them, so I know it's a small group.
It is. Yeah, let me, um, let me see if they're interested in taking the pavilion as well.
Okay, and then if not, we'll, we'll figure out another avenue. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah, that would be great. Okay, great. Um, anything else?
No, happy holidays.
I did talk with Doug Kern briefly today and, um, they, the run for, uh, yes, Virginia, there is a Santa Claus, ended. Yesterday. And he estimated, even though he doesn't have the numbers from the box office for yesterday. He estimated the attendance total was approximately three hundred. I think that's pretty good.
How many nights was it?
I think it was three days. I think there were five performances.
Pretty good.
Yeah. And that included, uh, Saturday where, uh, it was Walk the Village, Light the Tree, blah, blah, blah. And then worked out, he said probably about sixty families came through when Santa was there. And that was a narrow window of time. I would think it was like eleven to one. But he said, you know, it was perfect because it was already decorated for the play and, and people out of the elements and, you know. It's, uh, it's, I think that was, I hate to say win-win, but I think it was. And Youth and Rec was part of that as well. And, uh, that committee will not meet until after the first of the year, so like the end of January. But it'll be, I think it's the second Tuesday. At the eleventh of January. Got to learn how to use my phone. The truth will set you free. Um, but on the twenty-seventh of January is when they're, they're not building it as Winterfest, they're building it as, uh, sledding party. So hopefully there's no sledding. But, you know, they're, they're, they're very competent at, uh, at, uh, working with the crowd and, you know, they had hot chocolate. It'd just be a festive thing, you know, fire pit. So there's, there's, there's still some. Things to address there, but, um, being the history nerd that I am, I brought up that the twenty-seventh would be the day to do it because it's the anniversary. Forty-five years since the lizard assembly.
Ooh.
Guaranteed.
Yeah, so we're all going to try.
Let me just, I just thought for something, Dave, and I mean this actually, really huge compliment to the Youth Rec. They, they're doing a really good job this year with the idea of sort of underselling and over-delivering. You know, they, they've, they've scaled back these events to like, you know, real essence of them. And they're not over-promising too much stuff. And I think it actually makes for a better day. And I think that they should be applauded for, for really focusing on the, the important aspects of this.
Well, I, I agree and I'll pass that on.
Justice Tori.
Okay, section half of things we have none, but I do have some great updates on our Glen Park. Um, the roof today, the roofer's game and they. Um, the roof today, the roofer's game, and they started to turn down off the old roof at the No Nature Pavilion. And so, and then here I have a wonderful, um, list of achievements that were accomplished by the Glen Park Board this year, which Chairman Pete Warren gave me, and I thought I'd like to share them with everybody. Because it was a good year, um, a very successful year. Our, um, the mural by Ali Price, of course, was the highlight of the year. That's on the No Nature Pavilion. It's a, it's a mural of all, um, animals, birds, species, flowers are all native to the park. Um, the interior of the pavilion was primed and painted in preparation for a historical museum pictorial we're going to do. Um, and this year Frank DeWorty, I, and Pete decorated the entire trees along the main street to Rotary Circle. Yeah, did you see those? Yeah, those fun. Um, we also, this year, we were able to paint twenty-seven park benches with the Boy Scouts. Um, and the beams in the pavilion were painted black. As for the walls of the inside of the pavilion, we have lights and cameras are on request, so we can watch over any vandalism that does happen, hopefully that has stopped. Um, the pathway overhead lights throughout the park have been converted to LED lights. A bicycle rack was moved from the DPW by the DPW to the memorial pathway right by the No Nature Pavilion, so people can park their bikes there now. We have planted three blue spruce trees, uh, one up near Main Street and the other one near the pavilion, which is decorated with colorful lights. If you ever drive by there, you see it, adorable, that they new Christmas tree down there. And a new bulletin board will be erected near the falls. And, uh, we are soon to receive a little library box thanks to the mayor who's working with the Girl Scouts, right?
Well, that's, they haven't reached back out to me yet, um, so I, you know, we're hoping, I'm hoping to, but, you know, it's kind of up to them. Right. To do it, so I'm not sure what the holdup is.
But that'd be another asset, it's going to be a little, um, library for, uh, small, smaller children near the, uh, natural playground. So this, we've done a lot this year with Glen Park, and thanks to all the volunteers, we could not do without you. And I love this, this quote by Irma Donbach, "Volunteers are the only human beings on the face of the earth reflect the nation's compassion, unselfish, caring, patience, and just plain loving one another." So thank you to all the volunteers who make what, uh, all the good that happens within the village, and happy holidays.
I will say that pavilion, uh, no nature pavilion in that jungle park area in December looks better. You know, with all the, I know Pete Warren has put a lot in.
A lot, he's very committed, yeah.
Overcommitted. He's really a great artist.
Yeah, but we'd love it.
Yeah, all right, so let's take like a five-minute recess, then we'll head back in.
No, it wasn't there. I met her at date.
Ready, ready. Okay, is everyone here ready to get started? All right, we'll do, uh, so welcome everyone to the Village of Williamsburg Board meeting for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Eto'o.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
So, are you doing roll call?
I am.
Okay, did you do the roll call, please?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers, here. Deputy Mayor Eto'o.
Here.
Trustee Hunt.
Your trustee Sherman.
Here.
Trustee Tori.
Here.
Attorney Reiko.
Here.
Administrator Kindred. DPW, her chief villainance.
Here.
Director of Community Development, Dupree.
Here.
Thank you. We have no proclamations this evening, so I will make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
And we do have one public hearing this evening, so, uh, it, does everyone have their paperwork from the last meeting? Because I think it'll be helpful. You can borrow mine if you need to refer to it. It just says, remember the layout of where we don't.
In my head, I know where they are.
Okay, maybe Keaton, do you want to, do you have anything you could put up on the screen if folks have any questions? For the Cadman Drive, and you may not, and if you don't, that's fine. Okay, okay.
I'll just pull up the.
I found it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, uh, so I will make a motion then to open the public hearing for no standing on select areas of Cadman Drive. All in favor? So if you are here this evening and you would like to comment on the no standing on Cadman Drive that we're proposing, I ask that you come up to the podium and state your name and address. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak on that topic? Okay, so are you all comfortable then? I typically, I know we don't close the public hearing on the same night.
You can close it because traffic.
And then we can get it moving then, okay. All right, so, um, I will make a motion then to close the public hearing as it pertains to no standing on select areas of Cadman Drive. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
And, um, you can get, I know Ben, you've got probably the signage in the pipeline for it.
We have plenty of them standing.
All right, no shortage of those.
So Ben, can we change the signage, um, real quick, because you mentioned signs at Garrison Park? We can lower the speed limit to twenty-five?
The way you return from the state.
From whom?
State, we already, we already passed that.
Yeah.
We passed it, but we always, we need to get, uh, gets them referred to the state, and the state comes back and says, yes, we may do that. We have not received that yet.
Because I thought now that was our responsibility.
For any, anytime we change.
All right. Thanks, Ben.
So did we want to?
We need to put something on the agenda. Right, but I, do you, because I know there was, for Cadman Drive, for the no standing, where we're placing those signs, we needed to put like a certain amount of footage in because there was a tree there, but if the tree goes, wasn't there, we had that conversation.
What's the, the way that, what's those streets or not? Where those no standing zones were, the way I drafted those local laws would reference that, the actual drawings that's. Somebody provided.
It was the traffic and safety that provided it.
But I don't have anything.
Because, because it's very difficult to measure. Okay, so it's on, it's on ready. Well, it could, I mean, it can't be very specific. No, it's just, it's going to, with the way it's drafted, it's going to reference those drawings. Or you can, or somebody can measure it.
Okay, so Matt, do you want to go off agenda, and do you want to take this and just, you know?
Maybe we can do it by some property. I, I don't have the property lines. No, the purposes of. Yeah, but I don't know that the lines are by property. The way they were drawn, they're like next to trees and drivers. No, it could be, but I, I'm just telling you, I don't think there's any deal, I mean, you may not, like, to reference drawings, but I don't see any reason why they can't reference drawings.
Well, I guess I think what Matt's point is, is that if we don't move a resolution tonight, wouldn't we be able to get any type of signage up until our next meeting in January after that?
No, I mean, if you want this to.
So right, so then what I, right, in an effort to kind of move this along and get those signs up, so.
And what I would recommend is to adopt this based on the draw.
Yeah.
Like, looking at the drawing, you know where it's going to be.
Right here, by their building department.
I don't think the police will have any difficulty enforcing it based on, I mean, the, the drawing shows where the no. Can I see what you guys have? Unfortunately, these are black and white. Yeah, because you can clearly see where it starts and stops. Yeah, there's, there's dimensions to the length of the space. No problem.
Okay.
So we're going to adopt it based on these exhibits. Yeah, now, the resolution.
Well, that's.
We'd have to, we'd have to go off.
We have to go off agenda and.
Right. This, these two exist on this both. Yeah, there's two drawings. And the way of the local law, right, the draft of the law should be better. This is not, this is the old, this is the original communication. Uh, I can send those, send that to Keaton.
Okay, and then if he wants to, then, uh, do you want to go off agenda?
I can do it, or we can do it just as lean as, I mean, after my lean is.
Oh, yeah.
Traffic and safety.
Okay.
Plus, I'll buy them the most time.
All right, so that's, that's all that. All right. That way you can move on one of them.
No, 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 we're going to go off agenda under your. So you, so you already got.
I don't have this, you know. So just to include exhibit five and six, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Sorry, our next meeting isn't until then, January tenth, so we, if we don't go off agenda tonight, we have to wait till January tenth, which just delays signage and safety and all that, so. Okay, very good. All right, so, uh, we'll get into suspension of rules. So, uh, if you are here this evening and you'd like to speak on any topic as it pertains to Village of Williamsville, we welcome your comments. Uh, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Uh, Mr. Dupree is going to be timing everyone, and I have asked him at the three-minute mark to tap on a bell, and that will signal that your time is up, and we will then allow for the next speaker to come and speak at that time. So at this time, I'll make a motion to open the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so if you'd like to step up to the podium, uh, state your name and address, and we will. Love to hear what you have to say.
Hi, um, I'm Samantha Trojan, I live at one sixty-eight North Long. Um, good evening, as I said, I am Samantha Trojan. I live in the village, my son attends school here, and my husband and I co-own Orange Coffee, also in the village. I am here tonight to express how detrimental the mandates have been that the majority of you have signed on to. Earlier today, I went to, earlier yesterday, I sent the board an email outlining numerous studies showing the inefficacy of masks as well as vaccines and preventing spread. I also include a study showing the devastating impact masks have had on children's mental health and educational and speech development. These studies are just an abstraction, though, so I thought I'd like, I'd like to add some personalization to the trauma you are willingly inflicting on our children in your district. Every morning, a pre-K drop-off, I see parents outside trying to console their crying children who are frustrated and upset with having to wear a mask. My son recounts stories of how kids take their masks off and throw them, only to be picked up by all the other classmates. For clearly nothing about this is sanitary, or doing anything to prevent sickness, highlighted by his multiple runs with the cold this year despite wearing a mask. My children are one and three, and I can't express to you just how much they're missing out on in their development. No, I can never get that time back. My oldest is forty-four months old, and twenty-one of those months has been spent under emergency mandates. They cannot see faces when they go out in the village, coffee shops, wagons and more. And as they're young, they're missing out completely in key parts of social interaction, because all they see are faceless people. Try smiling at a baby through a mask and see their complete lack of reaction before saying again that it's not impacting them negatively. You are willing to sacrifice their present and future or no, over an unsipic, uns- uns- You are willing to sacrifice their present and future or no over an unscientific, unscientific, imperol mandate, mandatory mask mandate for a virus with a 99.5% survival rate, a virus where a child has a greater chance of being struck by lightning than dying from it. As a victim of childhood sexual assault myself, I talk to myself frequently about what bodily autonomy, autonomy means, sorry. Having to put a mask on him as he cries about it is inflicting trauma on him, teaching him that his body is not his own. It makes me relive my own assault on a daily basis. You are teaching children that their own preferences for their bodies is to be blatantly disregarded, that they should fear their friends, and that medical discrimination is to be celebrated. You are making children suffer needlessly, but above all, you are treating our children like they are diseased lepers. It breaks my heart that people like you are okay with actively harming children in a vulgar program and virtue signaling that is disguised as atheism. It is not your job, nor does it, your county executives, to dictate how I raise my children. It is not your job to decide that their bodily autonomy is meaningless. These, the only things being accomplished by these mandates are children suffering mentally, physically, and academically. This is nothing to be proud of. I call on you to take a stand for your constituents, especially the youngest whose voices have been repeatedly forcefully and willingly silenced. Public health is more than zero COVID cases. Take a stand against the perpetual emergency state, and tell Erie County and Albany that you care about those in your community and show that those elect, that those elected you, that those elected, that you elected, elected you to represent them are more than just inflated ICU bed numbers used to take away liberties. No society has ever sought to replace children for the old and the infirm. Time and time again, history has played out terribly for those that try to impose their role through force and coercion. I will never forget or forgive those that have subjugated, subjugated my children to these terrors. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Eugene Civic, retired dentist, and currently teach in the Biology Department at Niagara University. So I'd like to shed a little scientific knowledge on this. So those of you that are in this room or sitting there with those masks on, do you think they work? Yes, no?
They do.
They do.
Yeah.
No, they don't. The virus is smaller than the size of the mesh on that mask. The virus is smaller than the mesh on that mask.
I have actually a double layer of N95 in your.
Okay, well, if you have an N95, that's a different story. Anything less than an N95 does not filter out the virus. All right, so these mandates, the governor of Colorado, who is a Democrat, just came out today. They said, as far as I'm concerned, COVID is over in Colorado. No more mandates. Those that have been vaccinated have already been vaccinated. Those that are not, are not going to get vaccinated. And it comes down to a personal choice, not someone telling us what to do. It's not anti-mask or anti-vax, it comes down to choice. Ultimately, that's what it is. Not anybody telling us what we should be doing. Thank you.
Well, Ben Trojan. Ladies and gentlemen, I come before you as a village resident, North Long Street, co-owner of Orange Coffee. The last 21 months have been insane for Orange Winter. We voluntarily shut down at the beginning of the pandemic to not be a vector of transmission, while everyone was being asked to stay home for two weeks to flatten the curve. It was a difficult business decision to make, to shut down, but easy when it came to protecting the health and safety of our employees and their families. We paid them out of pocket for the difference between what PPP provided and what we were needed to continue to employ them until we reopened. We then spent months trying to figure out exactly what was expected of us. Our cafes went from online orders to pick-up only, to takeout, through a plexiglass barrier to full seating, and finally in June, as vaccines hit some critical masks that would later be determined to be irrelevant, to full indoor seating with no masks, freedom in other words. Our employees rushed out to get the vaccines when they became available for their own health and the health of their families. They were immensely happy when the masks came off, and it seemed like we were getting back to normal. Some of them, more recently, willingly began donning the masks before the mandates began. That was their choice. We believe in every individual's right to choose what to do with their own bodies. But back to, being back to square one, after we all rushed out to get vaccinated, it's hard to swallow. All to ensure that the help, dirty and unwashed, will be masked while serving unmasked people like our elected officials. Government executives can apparently mandate whatever they want, and it falls on business owners from force or face thousands of dollars of fines. We've had the worst, most difficult and confusing 21 months to own a business in recent history, and it just keeps on coming. Orange Winter has plans to expand further in the area, potentially into south towns, I don't know. But what I do know is this now, there's your chance to be expanded here, not where government seems intent on making my life, the lives of my employees, and the lives of my fellow business owners miserable. If you don't keep up with the latest ephemeral dictat, we can get bankrupted with fines. And what if we want to find out what is required of us? There's no single clearinghouse or website for such information. The State Department of Health defers to the CDC and local health departments. The CDC only offers suggestions. The local health departments defer to the State Department. You can always call the local health department, but getting the right person on the phone might take several voicemails. Combine this with difficult bureaucratic hurdles before COVID, high taxes, and knowledge that it's not like this everywhere else, and why would someone want to operate a business here? Why would someone in their right mind do it again on purpose after this? It makes zero sense that I can sit for an hour drinking my coffee with my mask off, but if I stand up, suddenly I'm infected and shedding virus despite having no symptoms of illness. The virus aerosolizes and hangs in the air for hours, not only while you're walking to the bathroom. It is unscientific and does not make sense. On top of that, after two years of this, the mental health of the general public is in bad place. Anxiety, depression, and suicide are off the charts. Now, you want me to ask me, you want me to ask my employees to reproach someone for not properly covering their face? And soon, we'll be asked to check their papers, turning every restaurant into Checkpoint Charlie. Thank God it hasn't happened yet, but somebody is going to snap and lash out as a straw breaks a camel's back. I deeply fear for the safety and understand why bigger stores appear to have a policy of live and let live if people come in unmasked, since a customer attacking your employee would be a horrible thing, and who's liable? These requirements are unreasonable and untenable, and I call on you, the representatives we have elected, to put your feet down. Tell the county and the governor, if they want to enforce their mandates in Williamsville, they are unwelcome. Tell Williams, tell them that Williamsville cares too much about our neighbors and their businesses and the safety of our employees to allow further restrictions, impediments, fear-mongering, and curtailment of civil liberties. Enough is enough. And if you'll indulge me, I do have a list here from set by Buffalo of the restaurants and bars that have closed in 2021 alone. Hundred Acres and Hotel Henry, Buffalo Roadhouse Grill, Cafeology, Cantina Loco, Center Cut, The Village Steakhouse, Brine House Cafe, JJ's Cafe, Lake Effect Diner, Maxon Hurdle, Major Tom's Drop Zone, Papa Pizza, Leonard's Joint, The J, The Steer, and countless others. Don't let this happen in Williamsville. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole. This is my daughter Peyton. And my family and I have been living in Williamsville for over 17 years. We moved here because it's safe, scores are top-notch, convenience, and are awesome and amazing street shops and village. We love riding our bikes to Main Street, whether to shop at the local businesses, grab a sandwich from one of the restaurants, or stop in at Sweet Jenny's for some ice cream. A vaccine mandate will infringe upon our freedom. Sadly, I know I will take my business elsewhere, as I believe in our founding fathers who created a document, which I'm quite certain most of you are familiar with, called the Constitution of the United States. Let that sink in for a second. A document that allows folks simple freedoms such as choice and religion. Our lawmakers and government officials are gravely overreaching their boundaries with these insanely ridiculous mandates, including masks, which in fact are not a law. We, the constituents, elected our officials to represent us, the people. Your job as the elected official in a democracy is to serve us by representing our interests in the legislature. I want to thank you, Deb, for voicing what is our God-given right, freedom of choice. Let the businesses decide on what they feel works best for them. Then patrons such as myself, anyone else in this room, can decide what to walk in or pass by. I live in Williamsville and want to support local, but it's becoming more difficult to do so with each passing day. If made to choose, I will shop in a different county that allows me freedom of choice. I'm tired of the threats, the corruption, fear-mongering, and the laugh of human kindness that this pandemic has caused our people. Follow the science, and common sense will remind that, will remind you that the definition of insanity is not repeating the same thing that has failed in the past. Masks are not working, instead causing respiratory illnesses. My daughter is now suffering from asthma as a result of a diaper on her face and breeding bacteria. The vaccines, which we were told would end this pandemic, doesn't seem to be the answer either. Our numbers are higher than before lockdown. What I can share is that suicide rates and drug abuse are skyrocketing. Depression and mental illness is on a rise. This is a true crisis. Let me leave you with this. Florida has not shut down, closed businesses, mandated masks, and allowed their residents freedom of choice. They have the lowest numbers of COVID to date. Perhaps there is something to be said about exercise, fresh air, vitamin D, healthy lifestyle that could possibly prevent or reduce the severity of this disease. I find it wildly apropos that Hamilton begins tomorrow at Chase. A man fought for our freedoms and a founding father. Perhaps if you are lucky enough to attend, you can truly listen to the words of Alexander Hamilton and how history can be changed.
Nicole, can we take your full name and address, please?
Cole Weinstein, side 05 North Forest.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anastasia Nikolaeva. My address is 253 Wedgeford Drive. It's the northern part of Williamsville. I'm here as a parent to four children. I have four sons. Two are young adults. And now they're facing, as an eligible vaccine receiver, they're facing discrimination. We've been a part of GCC Community Center, which is not a part of Williamsville, for 11 years that we lived in, in the area. And now only vaccinated people can attend. So my children don't have a choice. My second son is a transplant receiver. We don't know, we don't have any data, whether vaccine is safe for him. Kidney transplant is not for lifetime. My dad, who lives in Russia, was his daughter. I only have one kidney to give him in years. As an adult in the family, I give my children, as young adults, a choice. They choose recently that they do want to get vaccine because they want to continue to go to gyms and take care of themselves, take care of their bodies. Because from very young age, we did talk how it is important to take care of your body, to nourish yourself with bright foods, to exercise, to go outside, spend much time outside. I'm, as a mother, spend five hours in the childhood, outside, playing, looking around, and just living in nature. To go further, I'm a business owner. I have a micro bakery based in my house. I bake sourdough bread. This sourdough bread is ancient. It takes time, and it grows, and it nurtures, nurtures my children, and it started to nurture the village of Williamsville. I have a few people who are my customers in this home. And I did deliver the bread to the door throughout the pandemic. I baked it home in the morning, I delivered in the afternoon, leaving the bag by the door because I wanted to respect safety of my customers. As a business owner, and as a person who spoke out that I'm not vaccinated on social media, I did find some of the hate messaging. And was I afraid to lose my business, to lose my followers? I was not. I have the choice. And I will speak out with respect to others, that my choice has to be respected as other, others' choices are respected by me. Thank you.
I'm John Passanac. I live on Royal Parkway. I just, this is for the people in the audience here, or citizens of this, or residents of this village, we're going to call us. No offense to you, I'm looking at your faces, doesn't matter if it's local, state, or federal, these people don't care about us. It's evident. Don't. I don't understand why they're doing this to us, and we have the power, we're the people, we can do this, this is us. This is our, take, you, you always got a mask, a few of you, if you do, it is fine, God bless, but you know, for the rest of us? No more, this is enough. We're sick of it, you know, these guys, I'm tired of this nonsense, none of it makes sense. I'm looking at you saying like, how do you, how can you stare at us and like, yeah, you're not, yeah, 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 I'm like, but nothing happens, nothing changes, you go along with the narrative, it's ridiculous. When's it gonna end? Get a shot, don't get a shot, wear a mask, don't rest, two masks, three masks, I don't know what to do. What are we supposed to do? It's ment, it's mental. How do you do this? How you do this to children? This is child abuse on a gargantuan level. This will never be forgotten. Teachers, administrators, all these politicians should be locked up for gross incompetence, for, for doing this to children. What this is doing, my, my youngest nieces who are still in school, I can't even tell you. These poor women are telling me, telling us, forgetting their name, what has done to her family and everyone else there, how it's affected us, it's affected everyone. It's ridiculous, it's uncalled for, it's unconstitutional, and it's, it's diabolical. That's it. This is diabolical at its core. Do something to change it. That's it. Enough.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I'm a little fired up about this.
Thank you for giving me three minutes. My name is Thomas Frank. I reside at 5403 Main Street. I'd just like to comment on the, do you know when Wendy, as far as the LWRP for the village, when you're going to have the public meeting for public input?
It's still in Department of State where we retard their comments.
Okay, right, I got her comment sheet. I want to comment on the enhanced trail connection with the Amherst State Park. I started working on this back in, let's see, with the University of Buffalo School of Architecture back in 2007. And they said, keep working on it, these things take a little time, as far as the Ellicott Creek watershed greenway. So as the Amherst State Park, as far as the interconnection of parks. And one of the contractors that gets all the volunteers is the Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper. And we're looking at a development project for 2022, 23, and 24. And in 25 is going to be the bicentennial of Erie Canal, the National Heritage Corridor. That the Village of Williamsville, when it was incorporated in 1850, the purpose was to connect Ellicott Creek to the Erie Canal. And as far as the current, I call it a currency. This is a part of the relicensing of the Niagara Power Project. And let's see, so as far as Ellicott Creek, it's 46 miles, the watershed is 46 miles long, and it extends into Wyoming and Genesee counties. So Payton, you know, as far as what we started working on with Charlie Speck and this board, has to do with the Regional Economic Development Project for the CFA with the town of Amherst. And so I just wanted to let you know that the, as far as the, so the, well, the deadline is December 30th. As far as. All the, the River Keepers, as far as the long term, this extends through 2050. As far as the federal funding for the infrastructure, the Build Back Better. As far as the federal funding for the infrastructure, the Build Back Better, the transportation infrastructure goes through 2050. That's why they took out the Robert Moses Parkway and turned it into the Greenway. We're going to connect Eloquent Creek all the way down to Fort Niagara. And this is a part of a system that consists of the East Coast Greenway from Calais, Maine to Key West, Florida, the Hudson River and the Erie Canal. As far as the Eloquent Creek, this is a long-term project. Will you give me another minute and a half, please? If I was.
There's quite a few people here.
Yeah, so another, like another 30 seconds, Tom.
Okay, 30 seconds. I'd just like to let you know that this is tied into the, it's a long-term project and it's tied into the educational system. As far as the environmental restoration, Eloquent Creek is impaired. Okay, that, this is a long term and it's going to involve like the scouts as far as the middle schools, the high schools, as well as the University of Buffalo. The UPMD supports medicine as far as outdoor recreation. And it'll tie into the Scout Rangers, the National Guard, and the Homeland Security as far as.
I think, thank you very much.
Right, employment opportunities for the next generation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep, sure.
Can I get an extra 30 seconds right off the bat? So I got three.
Well, when the bell rings, we'll give you additional 30 seconds.
Don't be a wise ass, right? All right, my name is Dennis Hoben. I've been before the board before. I remember Matt. And I don't know where Chris DuQuin is. He's not here today this evening, I guess.
No, he's not.
He told me that he was gonna close my business down about five years ago because I used to own a gun shop in Williamsville. Unarmed tonight, folks, don't worry. But quite frankly, stood up and he said that we're gonna rezone South Long Street. And that, that gun shop is gonna be, what'd he say? Un, what's the word? Un. Nonconforming, thank you very much. Nonconforming. And we're gonna put them on a business. And I was sitting back where, actually, right where that Amherst cop is sitting. And I stood up and Kristen, Kristen recognized me and, you know, that's why I come here because there's so much BS and it's so much fun. But anyways, I happen to be a Mason and, and I don't know if you folks have ever heard of a guy named George Washington. Ever heard of him? Oh, let's go down here. Everybody heard of him?
I've heard of him.
What about Giuseppe Garibaldi? Ever hear of him? How about Simonton Boulevard? These are all Freemasons. They all fought for freedom. I'm a Mason. I'm willing to stand up here and fight any one of you for freedom. I mean, really, honestly, I gotta take on all five of you. Because I mean, this is getting stupid. It's really getting stupid. I'll tell you what, Brother John Wayne, everybody heard of John Wayne?
Yeah.
All right, Brother John Wayne, you know what he said one time? He said, David, you're not listening.
Yes, sir.
He said, thank you. He said, he said, "Life is hard, but it's even harder if you're stupid." Wasn't that beautiful? That's Brother John Wayne. "Life is hard, but it's even harder if you're stupid." Okay, let's start with Eileen down here. Eileen, did you know if your, if your, if your eyes aren't covered, you could, even though you were so brave and said that you had an N95 mask on, if your eyes aren't covered, you could still get the virus in your eyes. You could get COVID-19 and you'd probably die of miserable, terrible death or something, you know? Ridiculous, you know? This gentleman with the beard over here, I'm joking, of course. This gentleman with the beard over here, that mask is not gonna seal around his face. So that's not gonna do you any good to wear that beard, wear that mask with a beard. I, it's fine with me. I'm not wearing a mask. But anyway, it's stupid, you know? It's really stupid. If I get the 30 seconds on top of the three minutes, or keep going here. Does anybody on the board, let's start with Christine. Christine, do you believe that if you go into a restaurant and you have to wear a mask and when you sit down, you can take your mask off and you're, somehow you're not gonna get COVID? Do you actually believe that? It's just a simple yes or no.
It's up to each individual.
No, no, I mean, is it a yes or no, each individual? Do you believe that if you sit down, you can take your mask off? Just, just a simple yes or no. It's like Congress. My time is limited, Christine. Will you please answer? You know? Obviously, now I only have 30 seconds left. You set a precedent. Christine, yes or no, when you take your, when you take your seat at a restaurant, you can take your mask off? Is that correct?
That is correct according to the mandate, yes.
Okay, does that make sense to you? Yes or no?
You know, the people you're talking to.
Okay, Matt, let's, I only have 20 seconds left. Matt, what do you think? Do you think that, is that logical? Just say yes or no. Just say yes or no. I only got 10 seconds left. All right, Debbie, is it, Debbie is. All right, now I have 10 seconds on my time, please. Thank you.
There's a reason why I haven't dined indoors in the last two years.
You haven't dined indoors in two years? You're lost. Okay, Debbie.
I'm gonna give you a hard no on that.
No, okay.
I'm gonna say no, it doesn't make sense.
All right, thank you. It doesn't make sense. Okay, David, are you an attorney?
No, sir. You did a nice job on my front porch, though.
Oh, boy. He knows me.
You noticed, you noticed that I was wearing a shirt from the fire department.
I didn't recognize you with the mask. All right, does that make sense? You can, you can wear a mask when you walk in and then when you sit down, you can take the mask. Okay, thank you. That doesn't make sense.
The only thing to say, since you have the floor and I'm sharing it with you, that, you know, the main reason I got vaccinated in the first place is that I've been a firefighter for 40 years.
Okay.
And I still wanna help people. And you don't know, when you walk into somebody's house, what the situation is.
Yeah, well, you made the choice to get vaccinated. It's perfectly fine with me. I don't care.
Yep, and I had a heart attack two years ago, so I like to still be around for a while, so I choose to.
I hope so too. God bless you.
Yes, thank you.
I recognize, you know, Eileen, I don't have any time left, but a quick yes or no, I mean.
For you.
Pardon me?
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Because you're so anti-mask. So the next time you have a heart attack and you have to go into surgery for open heart, is okay that your surgeon shows up with no mask? You okay with that?
He'll wear a full face, face shield.
Oh, you want that, though?
He will.
It's interesting. Oh, no, most surgeons just wear masks.
Have you had COVID? Have you had COVID yet, Eileen?
No, I won't get it.
I've had COVID twice.
Well, yours.
Want me to go down and do, want me to do some pushups? Want me to run around the block? I don't know what you want me to do.
You're trying to make this into something that's supposed to be comical.
I've had it twice.
It's not. Well, it is not, okay? It's not comical. And I know many people.
It's not comical. I lost a very good friend of mine. I lost a very good friend of mine.
So don't make this into some, you know, one of your comic scenes, because you know what?
It's not. It's ridiculous, though. It's ridiculous. I was listening to a Canadian radio station, obviously you're letting me talk for another minute. I was listening to a Canadian station, this is how ridiculous the media is, and they said that three people had died. And I don't take death lightly because every day I live, I'm getting closer to death. I'm 65, I mean, how long am I gonna last? But there are three people that died in the, in the province of Ontario. And it was a very dramatic thing, according to the radio announcer. And when I got home, I looked it up and there's 15 million people that live in Ontario. They were making a gigantic deal. I don't you, don't you understand? You're being played. You're being played, I mean.
First of all, forgive my attire. I had surgery last week and it was about the best I can do. I live on Columbia Drive in Williamsville. I wanna commend Mayor Rogers for her courageous position on masks. As to a question about open heart surgery. I had open heart surgery four years ago, well before COVID, and Dr. Billy Grosner was wearing a mask. So let's not pretend this is something new. I find it very interesting that a couple of meetings ago, when Mayor Rogers expressed her opinion, y'all just sat and said nothing. And then suddenly, when it became a news story, you had to issue a statement to go along with the politically correct thought. It is a virus. I was vaccinated as of April 22nd of this year. I had COVID on or about September 15th of this year. Vaccinated, got COVID.
And you're alive, thanks for the vaccination.
And I'm alive. No, no, no. It was, first of all, it was. Are you, from where does your medical degree come, please? I'm sorry, I must have missed something in the conversation. Are you a doctor? Because I'm not a doctor. Are you a doctor?
My son is a doctor, yes.
Your son is a doctor. Okay, my great-grandfather was a doctor, so I guess that makes us even. So I would just like to say that you people, you don't, you haven't dined out in two years?
No, I didn't say that. I have, I said I didn't dine in a restaurant in two years.
In a restaurant? Okay, but you've dined in two years?
Yes, in fact, very regularly.
Okay, well, I clearly have as well.
Yeah. About that, but, but yes, no, we in fact have gone out of our way to frequent more restaurants, more regularly, with more, with larger orders, larger tips, specifically because we know just how burdened those businesses are.
And to what extent do you believe the mask mandate is going to assist these businesses you claim to support?
I didn't say the mask mandate would assist the businesses.
Oh, really?
Do you believe then, therefore, that it is going to hurt the businesses?
No, I think what's gonna hurt the businesses is when people bring their attitudes to the front door and then unleash them on the staff who are doing their level best to comply with what they're being asked to perform.
To comply, last, last I checked in the United States, we have three separate co-equal branches of government. The legislative, the judicial, and the executive. And what we have is a county executive who is using public officers law 24/7 to claim powers unto himself, which are now under debate in Albany. All I'm trying to say here is, if you wanna kill the business district in the village of Williamsville, go ahead. Don't support Mayor Rogers. If you wanna support Mayor Rogers, maybe some of these businesses will support you in your next bid for reelection as trustees. But I assure you, there are plenty of business owners in the village of Williamsville who are gonna support people who support Deborah Rogers because Deborah Rogers supports business. Thank you.
My name is John Ariola. I'm at 50, a little bit higher, sorry. I live at 5754 Main Street. We have spent years refurbishing a building there to live in and to business in because we love this village and we love these businesses that are in this village. I'm here in support of Mayor Rogers. I'm gonna echo something Tom said. This country, all across this country, there is a separation of powers. There's an executive, a legislative, and a judicial. The legislative make laws. Have any of you heard of a law being passed in Erie County? Any of you? Erie County Legislature gave Mark Pollenkar's emergency authority, starting when the pandemic began, and they took it back from him in June of 2021. Under what authority is he giving these edicts? Can anyone answer me? Is there any authority about Pollenkar's being given? There is none. What we're living under right now, our founders wrote into the Declaration of Independence. One of their major complaints about the king is that he was sending hither swarms of officers to harass our people and to eat out their substance. That's what you're watching here. I own a business on Transit Road. My girl owns a business here on Main Street. You all know the owners of businesses on Main Street, right? We don't need to name them. When people own a business, that's their heart, it's their soul, it's every bit of their finances. And if you force those businesses out of business, I will guarantee you, their 401K is also empty. And they're probably about to lose their house. Because that's what business, business owners do to keep their business afloat. I would wager there's not one of you up there that's in that situation. Are we all in this together?
No.
I saw a counterletter from the board go out and there were two things that I would take an issue with. One was stating that masks are effective. And, you know, we've heard this from a number of other people in here. Why would Florida be doing better than almost any other state in the United States? Why would Sweden be doing better than almost any other country in the world? Having not done mask mandates, having never done shutdowns. Why? Can anybody answer that question? Do you think that far? One of the things it said, the village has no legislative authority to contradict those edicts. Who asked you for legislative authority? They have fiat edicts. They're putting out, edict is the only word you can use for it. It's not a law. You're choosing to comply with something that's not a law. That's it. We don't even need you to fight. We just need you to not comply. Don't help them. They don't have enough officers to send, Erie County does not have enough people in the Department of Health to go check all these businesses. New York State doesn't have enough people to send all these businesses to push compliance. They don't. Help us. Thank you.
David, David Howard, sir. Do you remember me?
No, sir.
Derek Castren.
Oh, okay.
I live at 288 Mill, which is four houses out of the village, and I recently bought an investment property at 204 Mill. I would like to say that Governor, or Governor, Mayor, thank you for your. I think this comes down to courage in any leadership, school boards, anything, if you're gonna go run some critical race theory, you don't wanna stand up against how crazy it is because you don't wanna be labeled racist. You know, you don't wanna go over, come against transgender, pushing that agenda onto children that shouldn't even be thinking about that. You know, you're, you're considered a homophobic, right? When it comes to this issue, I think it comes down to courage. Not to call you out, Eileen, but your body language, anytime anyone's spoken here, you're, you're just shaking your head. You're very negative towards any opposing view. And again, not to, not to single you out, but obviously you can see you have two masks on. And, and I think when it comes to, or it looks, it looks like it, you do, I'm sorry. It looks like you have two masks on. I think when it comes down to masks, it comes down to people's choice. And we wanna say, my mask is to protect you, your mask is to protect me. It really doesn't work like that. You're wearing a mask to protect you, you care about you, and that's fine. But we're not wearing masks because we're not in fear of a virus for a couple of reasons. I had COVID last December. Doctor, is there, doctor in the back, has there been any confirmed cases of anybody that has gotten COVID, unvaccinated and getting COVID again?
Unvaccinated? Well, with the Omicron variant, they're saying the, most of the people that are getting it are vaccinated.
Right, but not everybody, I think I saw something the CDC came out and said that people that are unvaccinated have not gotten COVID again.
Well, unfortunately, CDC can't find those records.
Well, but they're, but they're admitting that. All I'm trying to say is, you've got 60 to 70% of Americans vaccinated. You've got people that have now natural immunity, a death rate, which is, I forget the number that you. Okay, children are, there's more children that drowned every year that, that, than die of COVID. And that's children birth to 17 years of age. All I'm asking you to do is be courageous and lead well and care about your constituents. That's all, that's all I'm asking you to do. You can wear a mask all you want. You can turn around when you drink your water. I don't know if it's out of embarrassment or you just don't wanna have your mask out facing people. You're very protected. And I don't mean to judge you or call you on just what I'm noticing from you and your body language and the scowl on your face, at least as much that I can see, is you disagree much with what people say. And you clearly are not a doctor, but I do respect the fact that your son is a doctor. And you get information and we all base our decisions on the information that we get. But the information, if we're really gonna be truthful, is that COVID, as much as it's a real thing, there's a lot of protection out there. It is definitely with vaccinations. No one's going without hospital care. No one's going without ventilation, things like that. People are much more protected. I will wanna, I do wanna read one thing to you. I wanna talk about the law, and I have a few more seconds, right?
I used up my time.
Thank you. I wanna read to you a, an actual law that's on the books here. I don't know what the S stands for, but this is from an Amherst police officer, S240.35. It's the law of loitering. I don't, I can read it all to you, but the fact that it is actually illegal to wear a mask in public unless you get approval from the town that you're having a masquerade party. That's basically the long and short of it. It's illegal to disrupt places of worship if you're coming as the health department. It's actually a misdemeanor. I mean, what we're doing right now is, is out of, I think, laziness, laziness in leadership in general, and a lack of courage. We are just going, going with the flow and we're hurting people, or hurting people. And some of you may not be affected. Can you just clarify, Matt, when you said you did, you have not dined in two years? You've said you've gone and had large orders, but originally you said you hadn't dined out in two years?
In a restaurant.
So you've not actually gone inside a restaurant? And that is, that is out of concern of your safety and your family's safety?
Because I, because I don't, because I don't believe that the.
Because I, because I don't, because I don't believe that the idea that the vax, that the, the.
It goes away when you sit down.
The virus somehow lives in this miasma six feet above the ground, doesn't make any sense.
And I respect that. I respect that, and you're making that decision, right? But I've been living this way for a year and a half now, and I, I, I'm actually a pastor, and I have been in people's homes, I've been where people have had COVID. And my COVID now immunity has protected me from being with people in their homes and caring for people that have COVID. And I go right in because, you know, that's what I, I, I need to do because everyone else is afraid to do that. So, thank you for the time.
Just, just an update here. This is the Amherst B poll. I don't know if you're familiar with it. But the question is, do you agree with the countywide mask mandate? Well, guess what the response is? 85% against, only 15 in favor. I should say something right there. We the people have had enough. It's time for civil disobedience.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jayden, daughter of Nicole. When the vaccine came out for my age group, my whole class got it, so I'm the only one who doesn't have it. So yeah, I feel like I don't fit in, but I'm not getting the vaccine. What happens to my, what happens to our constitution? What happens about how America is supposed to be free? The mask mandate and vaccine mandate is not a law. Why is it that we are forced to get it now? Masks bothered me at first, just because it made it harder to breathe. Now I'm developing asthma from it. That's not right. The only masks that are proven to stop spreading the COVID-19 is N95s. But they aren't mandated in those, so unless they mandate those masks, they're useless. They're not doing anything with our community except making everything harder. I will not just stand here and obey these mandates. We are a whole community. We have to stand together and fight it. Thank you.
Right there is our future, so let's hope for more of that. I just want to clarify a couple of things because, and I, and I think I should because I think it was my stance, my statement, that I came out with a few weeks ago that kind of caused this firestorm. And I just want to start by saying, it's just to clarify, I think there was some confusion of the Amherst B article. The reporter who reported on that took some comments that I had made, not as mayor of the village, but as a parent who has students in the Williamsville School District. And I really, you, you can't rein in a story once it's printed. But I did make those comments, and I made them as a parent, and I have every right as a parent to go to school more meaning and make comments. So I would just ask Ms. Wallace, perhaps in the future when she's writing an article, to separate the two, if that's possible. Because I think that there were people here this evening who spoke about their children, and you know, we as a board here do not set policy with the Williamsville Central School District. But I can, and, and I'm guessing you probably read that article because I've had people call me about the article as well. So just to clarify that. And the other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Civic had mentioned at Amherst B poll, I too have received roughly 125 emails in a week and a half. And out of those emails, 12% of those were not in support of me. And that would leave the other 80%. Somebody either sitting up here disagrees with that percentage, I welcome to see what emails and facts they presented. And I would have to disagree with Mr. Polenkar's statement that we're a vocal minority because if my emails and polls are any indication, and unless you give me another parameter by which to measure that, I would say we are not the vocal minority, as much to, as my fellow board members may not like to hear that. And the other thing I wanted to add to that as well, because somebody had brought it up, is, you know, I put out my initial stance on a personal, my personal Twitter page, and I was asked by my board to please take that off. And when I refused to take it off, that is where they came out with a press release and opposition, which I think further, well, there is something, you know, First Amendment rights, and I, I feel I'm entitled to those, just as everyone else is, even if I'm a public official. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that, just to clarify a couple of things I've heard, and I'd like to continue the public comments. And likewise, if the board up here has a comment they'd like to make, because you've been sitting here as well this evening. I know when I initially made the statement, nobody said anything, so maybe perhaps after tonight's comments, you do have something to add to the board's station.
Is anything that the, the other four board members have heard, has, have any of you decided to change your mind about this mask mandate?
No.
So you're not representing the people?
That you're not representing, that you're not working for us, then? You shouldn't even be up there.
Dennis, hold on, let, let trustee Sherman speak.
I agree with the mayor, and the press release was whittled down, as my property is to say. Most of my comments in favor of the mayor's stance were left on the cutting room floor, which is fine. I, I understand that. I used to be in that chair. But I think, as I said, I think it's, I think it's an individual decision. I, I mainly jumped on it because of my involvement with the fire service. And Doug could tell you, because he was there two years ago, I was checking out on the front lawn because I had a heart attack. And I have, you know, the situation, and I want to be healthy and I want to keep living, and that's my personal decision. That's why I went.
Sherman, I have a question for you then. You just stated that it's your personal decision. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then how can you sit there and tell us that we're going to mandate masks for you? Shouldn't it be our personal decision?
I didn't say that.
Just clarify, just clarify.
I'm just saying, I'm worried.
You were asked if anybody up there had changed their mind as far, as far, so you're saying no, you haven't changed your mind? You still agree with the mask mandate?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I just said, I don't agree with it. That's why I had about 12 words in that press release at the end.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Oh, I'm sorry, if I misled you, I'm sorry, but I'm just saying.
Your four choices, our choice.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and to trustee Sherman's point, you know, trustee Sherman had reached out to me to let me know that he supported what I had come out as a stance. But what happens in a democracy, because I, I think we're still in a democracy. My other three board members were, you know, adamant against the statement because obviously, clearly, by the body language and the comments and, or the lack of comments tonight, I mean, it's evident is they don't support that stance, and they do support the mask mandates. And, you know, initially, I came out in opposition to a mandate because I think it needs to be the business's choice. It needs to be an individual's choice. If you're a business owner, you own over a winner coffee, and you want to put a mask sign up on your door, great, God bless you. And vice versa, as a patron, if I'm comfortable or not comfortable coming into your shop based on your sign, then God bless me too, and let me go get a coffee elsewhere if I'm not. So, but ultimately, what the bigger point for me is what's coming around the corner, which is phase two, according to Mr. Polenkar's, is a vaccine mandate. And that is nothing short of segregation. You all sit up here, and you can agree that segregation is somehow allowed or it's appropriate, then you know what? I'm, I'm really quite embarrassed to sit up here with you, and I would offer to buy each of you perhaps as a Christmas present, a history book on segregation, because obviously.
So I have another question just for clarification purposes. So the other three don't care about we the people and what we have to say? Is that, wait, wait, hold on. Is that correct, Mrs. Torrey?
No, I absolutely care.
You do?
Yes, Dean, but you know what, I've also, excuse me, I've also received hundreds of emails that are against Mayor Rogers.
How many? I'd like to see numbers. Show them.
I'm not here to compete, all right?
100s of emails.
Oh, I know.
So you don't care what we the people feel?
Can you, can you show me? Did you receive, because I actually have mine all printed in my.
I did not, I suppose I wasn't going to do that.
Amazing, wait, wait, I don't need to hear that.
Anything.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. You work for us. You work for us.
So. So I do, so the thing is, is. We do, so we do work for them, and I know, I think that's getting, you know, no, but we do.
I was elected to be here in this position, and I'm not making a political re, career. I was here for the people of Williamsville. Of the 5,000 people who live in the village.
Is there anyone here tonight that was against masks in this audience? Anybody? What person, so what person stand up against that?
It's not about masks. It's about choice.
Constitutional rights.
How about the other two?
I have a question as well. How can we, let the man, I'm sorry.
Let the man, just say. Just have some courage, please. Please, stand up for us. Stand up for us.
Everyone, please, take a breath.
We have been for. I'm ready. Your breathing grew fast.
Let's have a little dig for him, please.
Hold on, let, let him, let him, let him speak, please.
First of all, I, I don't know how we suddenly became vilified in this conversation. But that, okay, but that press release was specifically, okay, fine, we're not talking about the press release. Fine, do I believe in freedom of choice? Yes, I do. Do I believe that there are times, and maybe those times have passed, I'm not making judgment on that, but there are times when, for the greater good, one's conduct requires greater regulation?
You represent us.
I do.
You're, you're supposed to, you work for us. You're supposed to do what we ask you to do.
Yes.
You're not supposed to come up on your own and say, I'm not going to do what the people that voted for me, I'm not going to do what they want to do.
I can't.
I'm going to do what Matt wants to do. That is wrong.
Dennis, you had your five minutes.
Go ahead.
I can't tell Mark Polenkar's to do anything.
Sure you can.
Yes, you can.
Yes, you can. I can tell him.
Oh, you can tell him.
So take this off. You can tell him. What if, what if the founding fathers would have thought that way? What if George Washington, Benjamin Franklin, all of them?
Okay, so hold on.
What if they said that? What if they thought like that?
Hold on one second. So actually, no, you could have, you all could have stood with me, like other boards. All three of you could have stood with what the majority of these businesses need in the village, because you know what? There, it's going to be a ghost town out here. And then you explain to your residents, when we have to hike the taxes up 50% to maintain all the infrastructure that we have. So the three of you who couldn't stand with me like other boards, shame on you. It's un-American.
I got people going to county, if you go to restaurants, shops.
Why can we go down 15 minutes on Transit Road to Nyberg County?
You can't.
Well, you can't anymore because.
They released a new, a new statement this afternoon. It's dependent upon the counties, yes.
Oh, okay, good. I didn't know.
That's not a statement.
It was, but I think she got settled because of pressure. It's safer on transit, that's why.
It makes no sense. Where is our common sense, folks?
We have no common sense anymore. But I, I.
For the record, when it comes to the issue of vaccine mandate, I am not in favor of it.
I'd love to know how my other two, y'all, who others still on the board about the vaccine.
I'm not going to talk about this anymore, Dan.
Okay, well, you don't, you, that's what you're here to do. That's what all of these people.
We're done with the mask mandate.
A young lady in the back who wanted to make statements, and we just settled down.
Yeah, you could call up to her.
Let's go back to the idea of speaking from the podium and having a little dig for.
I, I just wanted to say that they tell us, you know, if you want to complain or you want to get involved, we're supposed to start small. So we're coming to you, asking you to help us to fight Polenkar's. But you're telling me you can't go and tell them no?
No, I want, I welcome comments. I want people here.
I know, I know you did, but Matt said, Matt said, I can't.
I'm saying that as a legislative body, there's nothing that we can do.
But yeah, we're supposed to be challenging that, what helps.
Support Debbie.
But the business, you could have supported me.
All, if you, but obviously, look, I can't put something in your heart. It's either there or it isn't. So, and obviously, it isn't, so.
But it, it doesn't even have to be in the heart. He just has to speak for us.
What do you think the consequences are going to be if you supported Debbie? What's the negative to it?
Do you think we're all going to get fired by Mark Polenkar's? What's gonna, I mean.
No, but you're going to get fired if you don't remember.
I personally do not have an issue with wearing a mask.
But let it be the business. It should just be the choice.
A choice.
It is your choice when you, when you choose your responding enough to leave Debbie off of them. That doesn't look unprofessional at all. To have the mayor, I got, I got emailed from my lane, which was a can answer to my list of legitimate problems, which was, which was just the press statement. And Debbie was magically left off of that response. The other four were on there. So I don't know if this is some weird power grab, fool, that you're better staging, but it doesn't, this is a lack of courage. And don't make it look like one.
No, when I responded to your email, I responded by only using my name.
All, all the three.
No, it was not, I did not, I did not respond at all. Absolutely not.
Pull the email.
And I told them I voted against Debbie last night, and she didn't get it.
Matt, Matt, we've got your frankly request 80 seconds of time?
Sure, at this point, you know.
I use some of my time to talk.
Thank you. I use some of my calories to you. So this might be of interest to you, but there's a Facebook organization known as the 1791 Society. Representatives called Governor Hochul's office today, asking for the exact wording of the mandate. Surprisingly, there is none. There is no legal basis for this alleged mandate. I'm not a lawyer, but my daughter is. Sorry, that was low. So the other, the other thing is, what you have to understand is, you know, I'm out in the village all the time. I, I have not seen you. I have seen David. I've not seen you. I've not seen you. And business owners up and down Main Street, please understand, they're going to get involved in the next election. I'm sure you're here with the best of intentions, but other people with very good intentions, and you never know who they might be, may very well want those seats. Listen to the people. Listen to the people. We still have a free republic in America. We do not rule by fiat. We do not rule by mandate or decree. We rule by the legislative process, the executive process, and in the United States Supreme Court, with Barbary versus Madison, they decide the constitutionality. This is not a dictatorship. At least it wasn't when I was growing up, but it seems to have become that way, not just at the federal level, but at the local level. That is very disturbing, and you all should have stood up with Mayor Rogers publicly, unified. And I might add, all of the emails, with all due respect, you allege to have received, I'm not going to question your word. Where are they? Where are those people? All I see are people supporting the mayor. That is all. Thank you.
Read it. Read it.
All he had to do was read the two riot. It says Christine Hunt, David Sherman, yourself, and Matthew.
Oh, so it was left off of that.
Would you like to see it? Would you like to see it?
Show it to her.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have, yeah, sorry, I don't know, I'm not sure.
They got 100 polls.
Yeah, that is interesting.
It is interesting.
Well, I mean, I can see why it would be left off, because there's been a lot of contention between the board since this all started. So I can see that mistake being made.
This is from you to these people, not me.
Which is like you continue to be hostile. I'm looking at you in the face, and your body language is completely angry. That's completely disrespectful. That's completely disrespectful.
The email you just showed me was not the one I sent you.
Then I will pull it back up. I don't want to get closer to the 60, because I know your 95 minutes might.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Come on up.
Um, I don't even know if I'm allowed to be up here. I'm from Clarence High School, so I'm not sure if.
No, you're allowed to be, we, but, but we have something around here called open government, so we welcome everyone.
Okay.
State, state attorney.
Okay, um, Tori Leach, eight nine five, for Naomi Lee Lane, um, I came from a public policy class for extra credit, and I really do not expect to be speaking here right now.
You picked a great night to come though, really. I mean, you're getting like such an eye on this, how government should work, yes.
Um, and I just wanna say that the reason I'm up here is because of you. I just felt like you're very like empowering, I don't know. So I just wanted like to touch on the choice and I, how I respect everyone's choices and stuff, and I feel like that should be the same, um, in general, like if you wanna wear a mask, then that's fine. If I don't wanna wear a mask, that's fine. If you wanna get the vaccine, that's perfectly fine with me. Um, personally, I don't want it, I don't have the vaccine because my family, um, there's health problems with, like heart problems in our family, and we're not very sure how that affects. I'm not saying that the vaccine does affect that, but we're just very nervous about that. So that's the reason why I don't, and I'd like everyone to respect that. The issue is, is that I'm getting recruited for golf, and I was told that I have to have a vaccine in order to come to a college. Um, yeah. And I think that.
Your loss.
Yeah. My scholarship getting taken away because I can't, because I don't have a vaccine, it's just, yeah.
It is, I'm, I'm really sad to hear that.
Yeah, um, and it's a college I would really love to, um, go to, but if I have to have a vaccine to enter there, I really don't know what's gonna happen, and, um, it's not like my parents can just give me all the money to go to college and play golf. Um, so the scholarship obviously helps me, and I just wanted to say how that affects me, but yeah, that's it.
I think I'm not sure what state your college is in, but I know that New York State doesn't, but there are some states that offer religious exemption.
Yes, it's not. Yes, yeah.
Um, I have a nephew who actually received a religious exemption at a college in Pennsylvania, so there are states out there, and that may help to determine whether or not you, you know. But I, I would also say to this young, young lady here, I would say that, you know, just stand by your convictions. Um, I think that for every study that somebody shows you that said the vaccine's necessary, I think that I could show you an equal office that studied that says just the opposite. So, you know, stay true to you and good luck with it, and it's a difficult decision to be in.
As, as you guys voting to stand by you, you opposing the mandate, is it as simple as that?
Well, that's what the other boards have done, so I know, I think Grand Island took a vote, um.
Well, I just like to focus my.
So I, I don't know.
Matt again, Matt, I, again, I respect your, your medical situation, your, in, in saying that, you know, certain times require maybe certain measures, I would just say, you, you're gonna draw the line at the mandate of vaccines, I just draw the line at masks. Uh, I, I think it makes more sense. Vaccinations, I don't agree with them, but I think if you're gonna say that they're more effective than a mask, maybe, I don't think so, I, I don't think either are effective. But I just say, you could swing this whole thing right here, while you're just standing.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. Um, I, I think for, for my part, I would offer that, um, the, the mayor's statements, mayor's statements, and they were made, uh, in a vacuum. And this type of conversation, this type of open government, this type of freedom of expression, um, wasn't uh, invited. It. I, let me, let me finish. So, we had, we had three weeks of, of, of public hearings on, um, uh, whether to opt in or opt out of cannabis sales in the village, right? We had lots and lots of people come, more, more involvement in that kind of discourse than we've had in most local laws. This topic, other than some extemporaneous comments from the dais over the course of a couple of weeks, was never really a topic of conversation. There was no discussion about whether we should, you know, have a statement to the, to the executive, we should oppose it, there was no request for, you know, unilateral decision-making, nothing. There was no public input, request for public input. The, the mayor went on a radio program and expressed her opinions, and now suddenly, we're like the villains in the room, right?
It has an opinion though, it's, she's saying freedom of choice now.
Every, everyone has a right to free speech, and that free speech is an opinion.
Freedom of choice.
Oh, that too.
But you're saying no.
But you're an elected official who should be here representing, and, and I, what I'm saying is that.
You know, the, the thing I object to the most in this moment right now, this moment, is that I'm immediately, myself and the other three board members are immediately put on our heel as if we somehow have to, like, um, we, we've somehow made some choice, we've made some error in this, and, and what's amazing is, is that to Mr. Bowerly's comment, I am actually wondering the exact same thing, Tom. Where are all of the people who voted, who, who expressed their opinions in the negative of the message? Because I did receive just as many messages as my trustee Tori and trustee Hunt and the mayor received as well.
And where are they tonight? You say messages, were they for or against?
I, I, this is a. This is a question. No, I, I'm.
Answer the question.
I don't know, Dennis.
They didn't care enough to come, obviously.
And I have.
We did.
I, I hear you, I hear you. So, all I'm saying is, is that, to your question, yes, the board could, I don't know. I don't know what we can do legally. We can, we could draft a statement, we could pass a, a resolution that is, you know, it probably, it would probably end up being uh, symbolic at best, it's okay.
Yes, that's a lot.
Okay, that's, 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 to start.
If it happened everywhere, it'd make a difference.
Right, but here's, right, here's, here's my only comment to that. This is the first time you've asked us to do that.
Fair.
Okay, no, 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 fair. This is the first time that this group of people has come to this chamber and requested that, right? So to say, to come on here and to say the majority of the board and to elevate the mayor and, you know, all this stuff, all of it, all of the vitriol and the rhetoric, right? It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't engender any desire for action, what we're, what we're.
Well, then what's the next, then, then, what's the next step, guys? What you vote for you and you represent us, you don't do what we want you to do, what's the next step?
Well.
Let me ask you.
May I have a comment?
You're asking, you're asking for action for the first time.
May I have a comment?
Right, nothing wrong with that.
That's all, that's all. Do I know what that action is gonna be? Do I know what that next step is gonna be? No, but it's for that, for this body to decide and come to a conclusion as to what that will be.
You opposed Deb.
It's like, but I.
I, I did not, okay, first of all, everyone keeps saying.
Your IPR, IPR had suggested, you, that there was a document, you were opposing Deb. Well, it was just on, on, you're on IPR.
I don't know what you're talking about.
You were, you had come out with a statement with the other fellow folks who agree the same, like-minded, opposing Deb.
So.
You're, you're clear.
State.
So like, instead of the problem with that and that, that's a problem with that, that's not you. Just so you know, like, there's articles, like, in, that came out that insinuated that the four of you were against her, and your face was on it, so.
It was a better.
This is what's out there.
Okay, so there was a press release, and to Dave Sherman's, you know, statement earlier, it was predominantly authored by myself, trustee Hunt, trustee Tori, with full board input, I might add. It was not done with any sort of subterfuge or, you know, cat and mouse game or anything without a doubt. To the, to the, to the comment that I opposed the mayor's statements, or that we opposed mayor's statements. The whole, if you read the press release, the whole document in the press release was to clarify that, as far as the village of Williamsville was concerned, and for, for the, that time period, the village's businesses were concerned, that the village was complying with the mask mandate.
That means no one is enough.
And that, and that may be true in principle, but for those who expressed the opposite view, of which there were many, there were just as many individuals who were saying, well, I'm not coming to your village if you're not complying with the mask mandate, right? Now, to the point that we do not have any legislative control to counter being that edict, which is, you know, those words were chosen carefully. It is true. We don't. So to express, to the, to the community, that village of Williamsville businesses were complying with the mask mandate, because that is what the Erie County Executive asked them to do, is all that says.
He didn't ask, he didn't ask.
He told us. I, I, I don't disagree with you. It's, I mean, the word mandate is literally to tell you.
Right.
But it's not a law.
But.
Yeah.
Two, two, two points real quick. Again, I, I think, you, thank you for explaining what you do, because it, it really helps. But number one, did you go to Deb off the record and explain your, how upset you were that she made that statement?
Yeah.
No, you didn't, you sent it to me, I'm reading it actually, to refresh my memory. You sent it to me, the article and your exact words are, what the hell is this?, question mark. I get shit about starting a conversation with the school board about a mural because I shouldn't be acting alone, but we get to find out this from online media, I have no word. So that was the start of it, and then the clause and the fangs came out from my other board members, and, you know, it was just a dominoes fire after that, and I'm gonna bear everyone the embarrassment of what ensued.
My second follow-up question that would be, you said this is the first time that we've, and so you're backing up on your heels, which again, I can totally get, but why did it take this when it's about choice, and if you really believe that, then why not just act in the best interest of the majority of the people, which is eighty-eight percent to twelve percent, and make that decision without us having to do this?
Well, I mean, because literally until this evening, I didn't know it was a majority of the people.
Well, you know.
But, but what happened was, I can understand, I can understand you saying you didn't know this, because you know why? Because all along up until this point, we, the people, have kinda gotten along. We've gotten to the point where we're saying enough is enough. We're done with it. We are done. It doesn't matter what you decide, we're done. We are done. Open ends, would we, the people, say we had enough.
Yeah.
Great power.
No, I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'd like to hear this young woman, because I, I've tried this before a couple of times, so I.
Yes. Uh, you're asking, why tonight is the first time we hear about it? Um, I'll speak from my point of view. It was shameful to speak out that you are vaccinated, because you have a stamp on yourself, and vex people. It's all over social media. It is shameful not to have a vaccine, and you have to prove yourself why you don't have a vaccine. It's not your choice. You have, I literally had to put on social media that I have my choice for such and such reason, and then I respect it. And then, yes, you are well-educated women, yes, you have a choice, yes, it, we give you the choice. But if it's just a bland majority, if this is just a public, no, then you're unvaccinated, no, you're spreading the disease. And then, no, JCC does not allow unvaccinated people because they're afraid that kids are not yet allowed to have a vaccine, will get the disease. And they forget that vaccinated people spread it. I had a book club in my house, in my house, when a vaccinated person came saying that they have an allergy, and she spread it to four other people, two of them were vaccinated.
Imagine that.
So I, and I just, and I'm gonna go on record here with this, so, so you don't feel so ashamed and embarrassed?
Yes, I was, and I feel like I see, uh, a business owner who I have a partner to work with. I do provide my pastries to over to your coffee, and you can find them there. When I heard, and they, those people invited me, they said, you know what? We are going, please come. And you know what? The mayor has such and such you, please come. Then I had another, uh, customers, I'm not sure if they want to be open or not. Yes, there was those people who, they, we had a conversation in their, um, walkway. And they said, you know what, we support you, but we cannot speak up.
Well, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do tonight. I'm gonna help all you folks on here who are unvaccinated, I'm gonna go on record, say I'm unvaccinated, I'm not getting in neither of my kids, so that's all of you. And say they're unvaccinated, stamp me a red U on my chest or whatever, and I will go on record and be in good company with you, so.
And, thank you, thank you very much, and I really appreciate it.
So, so please, hang in there and, you know, I support you.
And, and, like, I, I should mention it. I received my citizenship.
Congratulations.
Experiencing what is asked in your test while receiving citizenship, uh, that you can come and speak out.
Yeah, and so that's what, and actually, local government is where you should be able to do it, nowhere else.
For everyone who is here who did allow me to speak up, because I come from the country where my parents, my grandparents had to do stuff because they were taught to do it, and they had no choice. Me, as a kid, did I experience it? Did I have, like, did I feel the, uh, push? No. My parents, my grandparents, did everything they could to love and to care about us, and just to spread that. We didn't, like, we didn't feel that, uh, and my husband, uh, is saying, you know what, if I'm pushed to do it, yes, I'll do the vaccine. But I will tell everyone that I was pushed to do it.
Well, thank you for your comments, congratulations. I just love the pastries that overwinter, I didn't know.
Not all of them are mine.
Well, you can take credit for all of them.
I will.
Um, any other comments this evening?
No, nothing too exciting. Matt Carson, ninety euro group. Uh, I just, like, what can we do? Like, you know, how do we, how do we wrap this up? I guess is the question, you know, like, there's maybe question on who's for it, who's against it, maybe within the ranks of the village, even though it's five thousand. Like, can we do a vote on it? Like, how does that all work?
No, I don't think, well, you know, I don't think a referendum, Chip can comment on that, we probably can't do a referendum on that.
What about just, just more so listen?
Yeah, yeah, so, we can't do that, filling that, you know, can, because I, I do agree with what people said that if we can't come to our local representatives, then can then go to the next step up, and, you know, what can we do? Right, so, even if it falls on deaf ears with Mr. Pollin Cars, because it probably will, um, it's, it's worth it still, right? You know, he needs, you know, the more municipalities near your county that stand up, you know, Williamsville is an affluent place, right? I think it makes, makes a statement, so I, I just want us to come out of this with something, like, if possible, right?
Well, I, I guess I have a question, and I don't expect there to be an answer tonight. Um, but, you know, when I, when I took this job, I took an oath to the Constitution of New York, United States, and, you know, some, there have been some comments tonight that suggest that the county executives' powers are illegal or institutional or, and I think from a legal perspective, I need to understand how true those statements really are.
Check the Constitution.
No, no, I mean, under, under, you know, the established state of emergency in the, in Erie County, whether you agree with it or not, I need to understand, before I can make a legislative decision, whether or not those powers, as stated, are in fact illegal or not.
Why?
You don't need to make a legislative decision.
Why, why?
Why? Well, I do, if I, if I, so, we, well, yeah.
You know, you're staying here, and just like I came out, they.
You guys, you're just or unjust. You're just, you're just trying to represent us, we're gonna judge you five percent of the people in the village of Williamsville, wanting you to go stand in a corner and stand, and jump on one leg, and you don't do it, you might as well leave then, so, you know, I mean, whatever, you have to represent us. You're not representing polling cars, you're representing us.
Erie County Legislature rescinded polling cars and emergency powers back in June, right? So who declared it an emergency still?
Well, that's, that's my question.
Polling cars called it an emergency, so he grants himself emergency powers, is that just public? Our, our governor did.
If.
Yeah.
Polling extended the emergency so that you can, you give yourself emergency power. There's also.
It's not false, that's not.
We have to do what's right. We give you.
That's what you have to do is what's.
We donate to the authority to call it an, an emergency, right? The legislature does.
I mean, we're hearing from business owners tonight, there's a couple of them here, I have heard from countless restaurant owners have. I mean, we're hearing from business owners tonight. There's a couple of them here. I have heard from countless restaurant owners have called me. You've spoken to a few of them. I mean, like, this is like our, this is our business district that is is gonna be, you know, maybe not so much with the mask mandates. But what happens when people like myself who are unvaccinated can no longer go to overwinter coffee, to D Camillo's Bakery? You know, this goes on. I mean, do you think that that's right? That I I guess that I'm not able to now as mayor go to any of these businesses because I'm not vaxxed and I don't have my papers?
I think I've answered that question.
Okay, well, then maybe that's where we start. Maybe that's our jumping off point and we come out as a board. But there is a difference, Dennis. There is a difference between max and a mask and vaccine. No, it is a freedom of choice, but the difference is, is a vaccine is something that's going to have lifelong ramifications. You're injecting an experimental drug into your body. So what I'm going to ask of this board, because Mr. Carson brought it up, and I think it's a brilliant idea. I would like this board to come together with me and I will come out with a statement if if now that we've cleared up that my Twitter account, I'm allowed to do what I want with it. I'm coming out with a statement that says I oppose phase number two by Mr. Polenkar's for vaccine mandates. Will you or won't you support me? Or are you going to oppose me on that one too? Because you maybe believe in vaccine mandates. Maybe you believe in them. And I'd like to know because maybe that is our next step. Maybe this evening we go off agenda and we don't even need a resolution. We just need a statement. Mr. DePries could put together a great press release like he did, you know, with this one here. And we could get a press release out tomorrow. After a very heated, lively, passionate meeting, the village board has decided to come out in opposition against phase number two. If and when we cross that threshold that we oppose vaccine mandates. So you all are here. You all got schooled because you didn't want to say anything last time I spoke. So I'd love to hear from all of you. Because everybody else here, your constituents are asking, what is your opinion on vaccine mandates? It's a simple yes, no answer. You've had twenty one months to think about it. Here we are. We're at the finish line, getting ready to kick it over the the field post. And I want to know how everybody stands because otherwise I'm going to come out with a statement tomorrow on Twitter saying that I'm opposed to vaccine mandates. And you all are going to slap my hand again. And, you know, maybe we'll have this next meeting in January tenth the same. So could you do feel like I'd love to be on the radio? Sure.
Just said, because if you have a vaccine mandate, you're also going to have to have proof of that vaccination, right? Call it the vaccine pass, Excelsior pass, right? Is that now? Now I need the government's permission to do everything I used to do as a free man yesterday?
Yeah, you do.
To go to the grocery store, to get a plane ticket, to go to a hotel.
Well, in fact, you probably have to. I have one resident who was very upset with me and she told me that she felt that every business owner on Main Street would need to hire bouncers and should, that they could afford that, hiring security at the door. So, you know, that's what we're working on. But I'd love to know, Trustee Tori, you guys, would you share yes or no? How you feel? Maybe we put that statement out. You met, you already said that you would support that. So that's two of us. Uh, Trustee Sherman, would you say that you would support no vaccine mandates?
I would support no vaccine mandates.
Okay, so that's three of us. How about I'm not hearing much from Ms. Hunt and Ms. Tori?
I ran for this board to to help improve the village, all of the village, all of the village, for all the village residents. We have twenty five people here tonight and we have five thousand village residents. And I have to represent the balance. And that's what I am. I balanced it. When we were having our claws and fangs out a week or two ago, I balanced it with some of the positive things. Because you have to balance everything. And we're not at a mandate and we don't all agree. And we're not at a vaccine mandate. We don't all agree on everything. You're all sitting out there, most of you, without a mask. If this were a dictatorship, you wouldn't be able to sit out there without your mask. You've made your choice.
Proactive.
You didn't make your choice. So I cannot sit up here.
So she says no.
And take the, take the opinion of a hostile twenty five people. It's been rather hostile when you're the minority in this room. And it's unfortunate that it. Chastity is another good word.
She's also with us.
Freedom loving.
And and I understand freedom loving. I I love my freedom. My my grandfather went down on a Navy ship and and floated for three days before they found him in World War Two. And I grew up living that and understanding that we lost peoples that were lost and and what we've done, how we fought for our freedom. That is not unbeknownst to me. But but when we are in a pandemic, that has not. That's not been seen in a hundred years. That is, then you may have to do something that. So not get ill. And another point today, I had an appointment with a business owner who had COVID in last March and she canceled today because she had COVID again. So you can get COVID. And she is not, she is not vaccinated. She was not a vaccinated person. That was her choice. Um, and she's gotten COVID a second time today. So.
Okay, so you're in no.
I'm not going to sit up here and make a decision or a choice on something that has not even come across the plate. I am proactive. I'm wearing a mask, but I don't get you sick.
I'm not worried about getting sick. I have natural, I have natural.
You don't know my vaccination.
Okay.
You don't have to tell me to.
Do you want to answer? Do we're, we already have three of us. We can put a press release out.
I agree with Christine. I want to hear the four thousand five hundred seventy five other residents versus.
So is, are those abstentions?
To do abstain from the the.
I I I keep, I'm a history nerd, as you know. I go back to, and I'll get right to her. I go back, I go back to Spielberg's Lincoln movie. And there was such hesitation to approve the Thirteenth Amendment. To set, to give black people the right to vote. And people were on the fence. Voting yes, then they changed their vote to no, then they say they abstained. Only passed by two votes. So it's either yes or no. And this lady, this young lady has something to say. I hope she does.
My dad got COVID and he was vaccinated. He died one year ago and he almost died from COVID. I am unvaccinated and I got COVID. I was very sick. Can you explain that?
Probably not.
I don't want to take more time.
I really don't think we can tackle that.
I think bottom line, what she's saying, the word out of a twelve year old young lady, is that if we're following the science, my husband, who was fearful of the disease, we are very respectful of his 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 freedom of choice. He got vaccinated. Six months later, two and a half weeks on his deathbed. Thank God, he's fine. She had COVID? Fine. I think that's bottom line, what she's trying to say. We all should be entitled. You do you, we're going to do us. But don't force us into leaving Williamsville. We're this close to leaving New York State. Done. Twenty months. Matt, your your daughter and my daughter are friends. We go back. I I I respect you and your wife and we love Aileen. But like, at some point, something's got to give. It's just not fair.
Are you leaving because of the weather?
No, we like to ski, so.
So Matt and Dave, do you want to put a press release out that the village board is in opposition of the vaccine mandate?
Yeah, it say that the majority of members of the board, including the mayor, are opposed to mandates for vaccines because that's step two.
So so I'm curious for for Eileen and Christine, when um, when it, when the vaccine mandate goes into effect and being now that I'm mayor and this was an elected seat, is that like a coup d'etat or like you guys won't allow me to commit a mayor anymore because like I'm not vaccinated or like how would that work?
Yeah, don't.
Well, no, I just, I'm asking the question because it does, it's a legitimate question. Well, no, do we? No, I'm not serious. I'm asking a legitimate question.
That's your choice.
Yeah, it is my choice, but you know what? It was also the choice of the people that I'm elected to.
To do with her body. So everybody made a choice.
Well, yeah. You can't keep me out of my vacancy. I mean.
There's your favorite choice. Didn't even think about it, yeah.
Well, but I'm saying, but how, but what I'm saying is, this is.
From.
Well, because I'm telling you, I'm explaining.
We go, we elect each other. We go elected.
I know, but this is a public building and currently we have signs on the door because according to. So how am I, how am I going to sit up here? The rules for thee and not for me. So I'm allowed to sit up here unvaxxed. But none of you guys who are unvaxxed now are going to be allowed to commit. We're going to have to zoom you in. No, I mean, I want to ask this, I want, maybe I should ask Polenkar's a question because that is a real question. If this is a public building, anybody who is unvaxxed, the village of Williamsville is going to have to hire two security guards, okay? To police the door because the mandate says they're not allowed to enter. So we're going to have to take tax dollars, hire two security guards. And everybody who's unvaxxed, we're going to have to zoom you folks in, um, probably along with me because I'm not vaccinated either. So how how does that work, you know? So, you know, are public places included or public buildings, government buildings, or we just don't want to hear from the population who isn't unvaxxed? We're just going to take that right away from you too. And guess what? You're not allowed to participate in government. Is that where we're heading? So no, it isn't because, yes, it is because December thirteenth. Phase two was December thirteenth. And their business is here for auction duty. It is happening. Go to a restaurant down on Elmwood and I've heard almost half of them now, you have to show your papers to get in. So don't tell me it isn't happening. It was phase number two on Polenkar's pretty PowerPoint presentation. And the date for that decision, I believe, was December thirteenth, so just today. So. Yeah, so I don't know. I mean, so don't tell me because we are there and I'm just asking that as a legitimate question.
I would hope that everybody in this room.
Thank you for coming.
You should do your job.
We've already.
Polenkar's and you're supposed to speak for the people. So now you're asking us to do your job.
We did speak. No, as individuals, you have the right, just like you have the right to come here tonight to email Mr. Polenkar.
Which you're not. And and typically, whenever we hold public hearings, we listen to who shows up at night and that's the way we vote. So what I'm saying is if all these folks show up, even though it isn't. Well, okay, call it what you want. Call it what you want.
We have a statement, all right? We have a statement?
Well, I, we have the three of us, I believe, that are opposed to the vaccine mandate. Can I say that without? Okay.
Double backs with a booster because that was my choice.
Right.
Yes.
A booster one. The first one of many.
Right, okay.
But it's still a choice.
That's all it's about is choice.
We're okay with the choice.
More importantly, to the mayor's point, you know, the idea that, uh, the one thing I will, I will say that, um, the let's just say the execution of any mandate, any rule out over the last twenty one months has been at best model. And as much as I am not in support of a vaccine mandate, I I think one of the biggest reasons to not be in support of it separate from any sort of personal opinion about it is that it will be unregulated. It will be unenforceable. And any attempt to enforce it will be thrust upon people like the 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 Trojans, for example, who have no skin in the game with regards to being asked to provide that enforcement. To have the the village, uh, you know, hall suddenly become a police state is ridiculous. Now, on the flip side of that, if a private restaurant tour wanted to enact their own vaccine mandate.
It's their choice.
That is their choice, but that was, that was just raised up as a, as an example of segregation too. So.
Well, I do believe in segregation, but I'm not the business owner.
It's not a choice. It's my opinion. It's not government sanctioned segregation.
No, but what's a segregation at the end of the day is segregation at.
And that, and and that may be true, but but as as so many voices just said, but that's their choice.
It is the.
It doesn't make it right, but it makes it okay that they made their choice.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
It's okay for them to do that because it is their choice.
So please, let's not be a, it's broiling on that.
Because other people are forcing it.
It's not, it's not.
A lot of, there's been a lot of nitpicking there, but to that point, but, you know, to that end though, that is, that is actually the, you know, the thing that I, from a, from an advocacy for local businesses is concerned with regards to the mask mandate, for example, is that, and I said this on NPR as well, you know, though, I don't think it got, but, um,
imposing the enforcement on private small businesses is untenable. It's irrational. So, you know, in an attempt to curb the spread, the use the word suggestion, to cover your face with a mask, is at least something more than nothing. But to then make it pean or penal on a private business owner, a small business owner who's just trying to get through the day, get through the holiday season to make it to the end of this fiscal year to be, to be alive in the next fiscal year, that is where the system breaks down.
But, you know, Matt, you said in your statement here, all public places in the village must comply with the Health Department and county executive orders. So, but.
Because, because that is the law.
It's not a law. It's not a law. It's not a law.
That is the mandate under the emergency powers. I don't know.
But the point is.
If it's going to be repealed, then it's going to be repealed.
It's under appeal.
If it's under appeal, then it's under appeal. But right now.
But for you to say must comply, you don't dictate what business owners do. So really. Well, no, you don't dictate. As as deputy mayor, you don't get to dictate what they do or they don't do. So it's really ultimately up to the business owners to decide whether or not they're going to comply with this.
I didn't.
But you did. But you, well, you stayed in there and it was a pretty stark statement. That's all I'm saying. I mean.
If if it was a law, this gentleman here would have to enforce it.
Well, actually, the only people that will be enforcing the mandates are the Erie County Department of Health.
Therefore, it's not a law.
Okay. All right, see?
I happen to know that a year or so ago, there was a church that had more than ten people in it. And Erie County called the town of Amherst Building Department and the town of Amherst Police Department. And they did go out to the church and tell the church that the the people didn't disperse. All they were, there was like fifteen people in a church having a service. And Amherst Police went there and they were, they didn't get cited a a fine or anything, but they hadn't dispersed.
I think that was.
So that is actually.
No, I think, well, it it, I I can tell you it's not happening anymore. I think when this first started.
It did not that long ago. I mean.
It was last summer, then it was probably before the legislature removed, revoked.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, Mr. Harman.
Would it, would it be too much, as long as we're in the press release spreading mode, would it be too much to have a discussion of whether the board would like to go on record telling the Erie County Department of Health and other enforcement agencies they are not welcome in the village of Williamsville due to the irreparable, irretrievable damage it would do to the business district in Williamsville? Why not another press release? We do not welcome DOH in the village of Williamsville. We're Williamsville. Stay away.
I have no problem signing that. Yeah.
How about a show of hands, people? Who would vote for that?
I don't know.
Who would vote for that?
I have a problem with that because the day you do want them in the village, they may not be available for you.
Well, but but that's their job to decide whether or not they're able to.
Oh, but then it's, but it's not their job to decide whether or not to come here tomorrow.
It is their job, it is their job, when we come out on behalf of the business, I can guarantee you, they will be knocking at our door within the next.
If they're, if they're here to enforce a law, like a law on the books, we welcome them. We welcome the Department of Health. But when they're coming in on a mandate that isn't a law, we could put a statement like that out saying as such. I mean, we're not, we're not.
I'm, I'm still looking for, you know, legal clarity on.
Well, you know what?
Attorney sitting right in front of him.
I know, and I'm not putting him on the spot like you're putting him.
Why not? We're paying his salary.
Yeah, well, he, he, he also.
Are we not?
He also has afforded the opportunity to.
We, aren't, aren't we paying him to be here tonight?
Yes, we are.
But Dennis, this has. Well, yeah, but, but Dennis, this has all, everything is so like fluid and like these mandates, it's, it's so hard to keep up with it. I mean, I didn't even know Ms. Weinstein was here and said there was a statement from Hochul's office that changed and she's taking. I had not heard that. I mean, oh, it was on Twitter? Okay, okay, well. So, I mean, but I'm, I'm saying to that point, I think it's really hard though for attorney because this isn't like.
Well, it's difficult.
Well, I know it's difficult.
However, I, the opinion I have to the village, basically not an extensive amount of research is the executive law, which is what the county as well as.
It's an executive law?
My lawyer's. It's an executive law. Section twenty-four authorizes local government officials to declare states of emergency and issue emergency orders. I don't see anything in that section, and I consulted with your conference mayor's general counsel on this, and he agreed that there was nothing that would appear to limit the, well, the specific question I asked is whether or not that order, I didn't even ask the question whether that order has the effect, whether they have jurisdiction over businesses within the county, because frankly, there's no question about it. The question is whether or not the county necessarily had authority over local government buildings within the county. And it would appear that, it would appear that that issue has never been litigated, but based on the language of the statute, it appears, it appears that the county does have that authority. There's also, there's, there's the new question, which again, Chip, I'm not asking you to answer right. If your question about a vaccine mandate. No, 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 I, I, I'm asking whether or not, under the, under the construct that we currently have from the county legislator's office, the fact that, that the legislature revoked the emergency powers a year ago, but now we're under a state of emergency again declared by him. She did under the authority of executive law, section twenty-four, which the mayor could do too, if she saw fit, or the supervisor, the town man. They all have that same authorities.
Regardless of the legislature.
Yeah, unless the legislature takes it away.
Yeah.
Counselor Secretary Galvin has introduced.
Then, absolutely. There's, there's pending legislation that would, that would allow municipalities to essentially veto that. I wouldn't, you know, I'm not trying to be glum here, but I wouldn't hold your breath because that is a bill that is being sponsored by minority members of the assembly. So the chances of that being enacted into law, I think, are remote.
At least in the next two years.
Well, there's three townships in the county of Erie that have already, um, are not gonna follow the, this mask mandate.
Wes Seneca, Marilla, and Grand Island.
Yes, but I, but I, I ask you what that means.
They're not going to follow it.
Well, that's not what the resolution actually said. Right. They basically support that legislation that Senator Galvin and others are trying to move in on. That's basically what the resolution.
But I think the key is, you know, I understand you're coming from a legal side, Chip, but I'm coming more from like the people's side. And I'm just saying that, you know, this, if, if enough counties stood up and said, we're not gonna do this. Because ultimately, you know, this is another unfunded mandate. Um, I certainly wasn't consulted on any of this. I don't think any of my board members were consulted. I don't know if any boards were, because when I saw the presentation, there was like a CEO, I think of one of the banks and, you know, Governor Hochul. And there were five people listed, none of them of which I recognize as the voice of the people as elected officials. So what I'm asking for, and the reason I put forth that statement, is because I am asking for just that. I'm asking for two things. I want freedom of choice to choose whether you wanna wear a mask, whether you wanna get vaxxed or not. And I'm also asking for anytime these decisions are being handed upon to the local municipalities, like, let us have a say in the game. Because there's nothing worse than mandating something top-down and not getting buy-in from the people who are supposed to institute that regulation. And that's all I'm asking for is buy-in. To, you know, to everyone here. I just want, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll look at Mr. Bowery and his, you know, what I see. So, and that's all I'm asking for, freedom of choice. And I think that we need to have buy-in. I mean, it shouldn't be one person or two people making a statement, you know, for a pandemic that was supposed to be two weeks to flatten the curve, and here we are almost two years later. I'm sorry, but emergency powers should never be allowed to last that long. Like extended this long. And, you know, I will say to the people who are living in fear, I, I do have the greatest empathy. I have a lot of my family that is completely paralyzed by this. Um, not immediate family, but extended a family, so much so that we're going into two years now with no holiday celebrations whatsoever. So I, I do have the greatest empathy for those people. And, um, you know, I, I don't know how it's gonna take to get them past it. But at the same point, I also have empathy for people like myself who are unvaccinated, um, who are potentially already being shut out of, you know, I can't go to Shays, I can't go to like the Bills, I can't, whatever, the list keeps growing and growing. I, I also have empathy for those people who, you know, should, and we should all, if we're, if we're preaching tolerance, we need to preach it to those who are with us and those who are opposed to us. We shouldn't just call the people out who don't agree with us as being selfish or deplorable or throw in, fill in the blank there. So I'm just asking this board to just have, you know, empathy on both hands. Because you're sitting with someone who's unvaccinated, I'm assuming the rest of the four of you are. And, um, you know, I just think, you know, there's gonna be a time where you're gonna need to have some empathy and understanding as we move through this. And I'm sitting on this board for another two years. So we're gonna have to work this out and we're gonna continue working together. And I don't know how it's all gonna play out, but.
I live a full, normal life. I travel all the time. It's my business. That's what I do. I don't live in fear.
I'm not saying you specifically, I'm saying a lot of people are.
I just live it out of respect for other people. I live with the respect for other people. That's just, if there's mandates, I go to businesses all the time where I have to wear a mask. That's what they expect me to do. Can't walk into a pharmaceutical facility without a mask on. Absolutely not. They expect that.
This is a freedom of choice we're talking about.
But they expect that because that's what they are doing to protect their, their employees and their business to keep it operating.
Because they've been bullied into.
So they have, they have made those choices.
No, they haven't. They've been bullied into it with fines and threats and Department of Health sanitarians.
No, they, they have, they have COVID facilities. They have COVID in their buildings and they try to. Every business I go to has something.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think was, I, I do wanna close this.
You just have to, to. Yeah. What is right for you as an individual. I did, I know what you said. I was listening. But I also have my choice, is what I'm saying.
But also, so if you believe that with your heart, then you should have no problem signing onto our vaccine mandate.
I will not do that. It is not on the table yet. I will make that decision.
Separation, you would have stayed completely before that. You would have not made a decision.
That's a totally different topic. That is something, this is about people's health and wellbeing. That is.
Yeah, and there's a lot of action that we can talk about that I'm not gonna get into that night because, you know what? I look at a VAERS report, Google it, VAERS, look at a couple of those. And you come and talk to me when Pfizer has released all of the five-hundred-page report, you know, not fifty years from now, like, I wanna see it immediately. Because, look, i- i- this isn't going anywhere, this discussion, but you're obviously on one end and, and, you know, I'm on the other and we're somewhere all in between here. But if there's anyone else who would like to speak this evening, I'd love to have you come up and hear from you. Otherwise, I'm gonna go ahead and close this out for tonight. Anyone?
Could, could the counselor please come up with specific medical conditions under which the mandate would, mask mandate would not be enforced? The mandate, uh, so-called specifically says those who are medically able to wear a mask. I believe that the counselor, I would like some, uh, clear elaboration on what can, what is considered a valid medical excuse to not wear a mask and how will that be enforced in the village?
So I, I looked for those guidelines. Um, I didn't see anything specific. I think it was just a person's, um, statement that they're medically not able to, because I did look for that because I was curious about that myself. So I don't think we'll find it.
No, that, that was in a letter that was sent today to a venue by the county executive's office. I can furnish a copy of that.
I would love to see that.
Not presently, but.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. Cause I, I'm not aware of what that is. I did look for that information today because I undoubtedly knew we'd have people here today who aren't medically able to wear it. Um, so I just wanted to have that.
Upon receipt of that, may we have clarification of acceptable, acceptable medical conditions under which somebody may refuse to wear a mask?
That, that would have to come from the person who wrote the mandate.
Yeah, so, yes, so would they.
You certainly request that information from the county executive, but that is the author of that mandate.
Okay, thank you.
I can offer a conclusion. I don't know how many people watched, uh, the services for Bob Dole last week. But the president of these United States quoted Bob Dole saying, "Too many of us have sacrificed too much in defending freedom from foreign adversaries to allow our democracy to crumble under a state of infighting that goes more acceptable, unacceptable, day by day."
That's very good. One last time, does anyone wanna come up and speak before I close it out? If you came this evening, feel free to come up and.
I took thirty seconds.
You know, and, and the one thing I guess that, uh, people allude to the fact that people have gotten, uh, uh, vaccines and they became sick afterward. You see a lot of reports that on different, not so much on media, but a lot of other medias that are willing to report the truth. Um, there's a lot of cases where people have the vaccine and they're, and they're spreading it to others as much or maybe even more than the unvax, than the unvax, especially people that are, um, have immunity, natural immunity. And then people are dying also. So, uh, I think there's a part, a problem, and also masking. So if you're wearing a mask, you have these masks, then here is a person who's got coagulability. See, oh, everybody's wearing a mask. I feel safe going to the grocery store now because we're wearing a mask. Well, they're not safe from, from that. So I think it's more honest and it's virtue signaling, a lot of virtue signaling. There are some that may be more effective rather, but there's a lot of studies out there. They're saying that masks really are not effective by, um, uh, doctors. Not, not just, uh, you know, nutcases or something. But anyway, um, uh, so the point still is that it actually provides, um, a, a false sense of security for people that really do have coagulability and, uh, that possibly can get sick. And I think if there's this place that says, oh, only vaccinated are, are allowed in here. Oh, good, I'm safe to go in there. Well, guess what? You're really not. If you have coagulities, if you're worried about, if you're really, really scared about it and you have problems, then stay home or, you know, receive your groceries out in the parking lot or whatever else. Don't go into places because you're not any safer. So I think the problem with these things is that they're not working. And so by saying, I, I wanna have a, a vaccine mandate, you're, um, separating people, but there's still people who are sick in both camps. So it's really only, you're only segregating, but not really helping in any health situation. And I think that you have to realize that that's kind of an important point about all this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There is literally nothing about capital reversing the decision. No, there is. I found it. Where is it? Um, I found on New York One, uh, Spectrum News, she said it's up to here.
See, Matt, you're not real good with social media. So.
This came up.
Thank you.
Open an iPhone.
It's your choice.
So is she leaving it up to the counties?
Enforcement of New York's mandate for people who wear masks inside or require proof vaccination will ultimately be up to businesses and county governments to enforce. To enforce, not to decide.
Yeah, but, but.
No.
How can they enforce it?
I'm, I'm just, I'm clarifying the sentence. And the sentence earlier was that she left it up to the counties to decide whether or not they were compliant. That is not what it said. I didn't have the tweet like this. Several county governments in New York, in upstate New York, including Madison, Runcleers, have signaled they will not enforce the mandate which requires people who wear masks indoors or have businesses required to show proof of vaccination.
Which is what we should.
We hope that they will. It's in the best interest of public health, says Hochul.
Well, it's not, but, and, and we should stand up against it, I feel, as a village.
There's a difference of opinion. I do have faith in New Yorker. She says the vast majority wants to do what's right. They want to put this mandate on the earth. Hochul has and county leaders are pleased with the mandate at the state level. We're not politically eager to force every county. It's different. Many of them, some county executives have asked us to do this so they could have what I call air cover. Mandate took effect on Monday as public health officials have raised concerns. Hochul on Monday said it was too soon to tell the limits on those procedures along the staff being bolstered by numbers. National Guard, that's had the center effect of the distress healthcare facilities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So essentially, she's not sending state police. Here you go. Thank you.
Well, she won't, she can't send state police because state police will tell her to, they're not enforcing it.
Well, I understand, but so, but the point is that the, 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 the state mask mandate is still in full effect.
If you wanna follow it.
Where's the mandate?
Yes.
Where, where's the capital local side document that is?
Yeah, I, you know.
Signed by the commissioner of health. Signed by the commissioner of health. Document exists.
Well, the commissioner of health, I, yeah.
Because it's under the authority that's given to the commissioner of health. That's what was issued under.
Why are we giving, as an elected body, why are we giving power to a non-elected official? So I, I, you know, I, we can have this debate all morning, but. Yeah, I know. And I'm, I'm, I don't, I didn't mean it if it sounded that way. I apologize. I didn't mean it that way. Um, is there anyone else who would like to comment tonight before we close out? Anyone? Alright, so I wanna thank everyone for coming and your comments. We're gonna finish up with some business that we have here. You're more than welcome to stay. Um, actually, do you want us to come to stick with a five-minute break?
No. Consensus.
Well, okay, let me put it this way. I need a five-minute break. I'm gonna go to the ladies. If you guys wanna continue. I'll make a motion to close the suspension rules for public participation.
Say it.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Everybody, everybody, thank you.
We're in a five-minute recess.
No.
They are just stepped down. So the first, the first resolution on the side was to authorize paid training hours for HBC. This is in particular for one of the members who took it already, so it's kind of retroactive. I'm not gonna spare you all the reading.
Matt, I think you're.
Okay. Neither can I. Yeah, apparently. Folks, folks in the hall. Please, I, I made a motion to pass E two number one as written. Say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Similarly, E two number two, again, is about continuing education credits for, uh, planning boards, zoning boards to start reservation. I pass it as written. Make a motion.
No, can you close the doors for us?
No, you can't. Make a motion to pass E two two as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
E two number three, Williamsville Lehigh Valley Section House exterior asbestos payment project was duly advertised. Bitch, the project was opened, were opened at two PM on Wednesday, December eighth. And whereas two biz were receiving the project, now therefore being resolved with the contract, Lehigh Valley Section House exterior of Bacon Project is hereby awarded to Eric Incorporated of Dupuy, New York for their low bid amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars with an ad unit price number one of eighty-five dollars and an ad unit price number two of one thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. On the question, can you explain the additional service question?
Additional service.
I'm sorry, the additional unit price number.
Uh, unit prices, um, we don't have enough money to do the whole building.
Okay.
So we've got a base project in there and then we're basically going to pick and choose.
These are.
Eighty-five dollars is for cutting of the spider.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Cutting of the spider with, um, stucco.
Okay.
For foot. And then the one thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars is a bait around each window.
Perim, like, per lineal foot or per window?
Per window.
Okay, so the eighty-five dollars is per.
Foot.
Per lineal foot of.
Grinding the stucco.
Grinding.
So that it can then be, uh.
Stucco.
Re-stuccoed.
So, okay, eighty-five dollars per lineal foot of stucco grinding.
Yep.
And an ad unit price of one thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars of asbestos abatement.
Per each.
For each window.
Per window.
Per window.
To cut out a basically four-inch perimeter to completely abate that. Uh, so that looking forward into the future, when the windows are changed out, which is a bit, can be a frequent thing to happen, uh, more frequent than taking asbestos off.
Right.
We don't have to worry about. The rest of the building will be encapsulated.
Oh, sounds good.
Oh, like. What, what is that?
That's, we're not, we're not even there yet.
Okay.
We're just stabilizing asbestos so we can get there.
Gotcha.
Part of the drive on this is that the, uh, CDBD funding is shutting down this, our last allocation on February twentieth.
I see.
Okay.
Okay.
So and that's the base is to cut, um, expansion joints into the stucco to allow it to go.
So it's not spider cracking.
Okay. How much was this, did we do, how much was that? It was forty thousand, forty thousand, right? And we're using all for the section house, right? Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so, and then, um, not that this is relevant here, but with regards to whatever the surface material ends up being, that will.
That's HPC.
That's HPC.
Yeah.
Yes, it is, okay.
This is the determinant for team maintenance for the.
Yep. Totally.
Very nice experiences for the E C to do this, um, but we're set to hit the ground running.
Okay.
Good.
So I would, I would move this as amended to include the per linear foot of stucco grinding at the eighty-five dollar unit price and the of asbestos abatement per window to the price number two.
Yes. Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll just abstain, because I wasn't here for it.
Fair. Um, E two number four, resolve the proposal from Stoll Environmental for professional services for construction administration for asbestos-related services for project monitoring. During abatement at Williamsville Section House one fifty million street, Williamsville, the arc is hereby approved at a cost of three thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and zero cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is it for me.
And next for his reports is trustee Sherin, resolution.
Just one single resolution resolved that Linda Facer of forty-five Wellington Court North, Williamsville, is hereby appointed to the meeting house events committee until the end of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two official village year.
Second. She's gonna be a great volunteer if she was on. I mean, she'll, she'll be wonderful.
Yes, she's done before.
Yeah, she's really good.
Thank you.
So I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And next for reports and resolutions is trustee Tori.
Thank you. I have, uh, no reports, but I have to go off agenda for a resolution?
Yep.
Make a motion, I make an emotion to go off agenda for, for resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So resolve that local law number five of twenty twenty-one amending chapter one oh three to prohibit standing along certain sections of Padman Drive, which was a subject of a public hearing on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, is hereby adopted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to go back on agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all for me. Thank you.
Next to her reports and resolutions is trustee Hunt.
Uh, no resolutions. I gave my report, uh, during our, um, work session. I will say that we did take a really nice photo in front of the Christmas tree as a board. And it would be really grand if that could be put in the paper. I was looking for it on Wednesday, hoping they would have put that in.
The beach.
It's on the beach of the picture.
But you know, Christine, Christine, I sent the editor of the Congress B an email exactly requesting that.
Because.
And she never answered me that.
It's unfortunate, because.
Well, it is unfortunate.
I'm sorry.
No, I have, I have this, I have this.
This for the village or a village event where, you know.
I have this personal email. I think it's best if we went through him, Kristen, and.
Yeah, maybe they can put it on there and say happy.
Well, yeah, you can't tell the newspaper what to do.
I think that you might be.
I actually really like my day. Yeah.
I know it was across from like the whatever before. Uh, that's it. It was on the front page as well, but I still think that that's important. You know me.
Well, no, and I do, and I agree with that, because that was probably, I didn't get to see it, but it was probably a nice picture. And if they can put it in there, it would be really nice. Because like, since we're not gonna have a holiday newsletter.
Yeah.
So we're gonna put the newsletter out till January, because we kind of missed the tree lighting and all that. So, um, we'll hold out till January. So that might be nice, like happy holidays for the village board, that if they can. I mean, I don't wanna tell a newspaper what to do, but, you know.
Well, I would have thought they would have showed the photo.
Yeah, the gentleman who was here to have.
Okay. Yeah, well, well, I don't, you, I know you have context of this.
Sure.
Michelle, do you want this copy of this resolution?
Thank you.
So you can have mine. You wanna? Because I know you need that for that. Okay.
Nothing else?
Okay, um, so I'll jump back to my reports and resolution and I'll make a motion to move resolutions number one, two, three. One, two, three, as they appear on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, resolution number four is resolved that late duties hereby approved for David Klein for the period through March twenty twenty-two at the time of his next medical evaluation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, um, no other reports, just everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and our next meeting is January tenth. So that's, it does seem very far. But, you know, it's our only meeting.
Well, I have one thing to say.
Yeah.
You guys took a lot of views tonight. Now, I think everybody's got their opinion. I respect everybody here. But I think that some of these people really got beat up on and they don't deserve it. I'm sitting here being neutral. And I think, you know, they really took a beating. I don't think it's for, for some of the comments they got. And like I said, you all have your own opinion.
Yeah.
But I just thought that somebody got pretty beat up.
This phase.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that is, that is nature of the beast.
And that's all.
Yeah, no. That's, that's embarrassing.
The job, I guess, but.
It does.
It does go in the job, yeah.
Reports, um, Tom Bowery's run for the office.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're done, yeah. I'm sorry, yeah. Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, was Judy able to connect in?
Yes.
Because I know we lost. Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, my mom said. And and was there somebody else on there too? Or was that it?
Yeah, I'll take that to you after just a little.
Okay, okay, all right, good. So we just, so we have an infection.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll take this either.
Yeah, I don't know. At least it was a wireless issue. I don't know what it was.
Yeah, sorry.
Wireless router wasn't working properly.
Yeah.
I ended up over there.
Yeah.
So, listen, I go to the video.
Yeah. Nice.
Yeah.
For work or fun?
I don't know.
You will.
For work, okay.
Would I, would I leave a five a.m. to return it?
Well, you know, you don't know. I mean, I don't know.
Uh, so if you wanna grab something on.
Well, are you, are you, you're, you're good though, putting that out that we, you know?
E two was trying to make the basic premise of the statement? Yes. It would have said, I don't really, but, um.
Oh, yeah, we're not meaning for.
I don't have a lot of time.
Okay, so, well, let me just have. Yeah, and you said he's saying with a pressure, you can just send it to tree notes. Well, all right, but one copy, yeah.
I actually did, but we did it that morning and I was.
No, it's late, yeah. No, it couldn't wait till, yeah, thank you.
Twenty-one months.
I, I worked there.
Uh, it's not true.
Well, we didn't make a resolution, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we're not, we won't make a.
Yeah, they don't wanna hear.
Yeah, I think it's gotta be important. It is important that we, that we address.
Well, when they're, I've seen after they're finished, the practice.
The law, the legal side.
To your point, she needs a specific quote to reference phase two of the county executive's.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
That is what we're talking about.
Yeah. And that phase two was supposed to, was gonna be discussed December thirteenth, which is today. I know it's not. But initially, when phase one was introduced, December thirteenth was the date that they were. Yeah, so, um, the, you know, the board is opposed to, you know, the vaccine mandates.
Impended.
Yeah, impending, because we're not there yet, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, impending, sorry.
No.
Ending means that it's out.
Right, that's not true. Well, or, or.
Potential is fine.
Yeah.
Perfect, well, it was proposed by them, so you could use the word proposed, that's fair.
Right, I mean, because.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks. Have a good night.
You know, they were, they, they, they weren't, they didn't say that they were going to flip the switch on phase two. Just that they were going to review it or evaluate the mask, you know, and make decisions on moving forward. So to that end, we're not in support of moving forward into a second phase that would inquire, or mask, uh, sorry, vaccine.
Yeah.
Right, something, something along those. Good night, Chip.
All right, good night, Chip. Thank you.
You wanna tell it, I will walk out with the girls. The whole group's waiting out there.
Oh, really? They're still talking?
Yeah, they're all, I'm walking out.
Oh, they're not gonna be.
They might catch you in a conversation.
Oh, you're talking about.
Yeah, I just want, you know, so no one gives them a hard time.
All right, well, thank you, guys. You know, it was a lively discussion, probably a relaxed discussion, as far as that was seen.
You must feel very motivated.
Well, I do, and I'm just, and I'm not gonna be quiet about it. I'm, I'm mayor of a small village. It's just isn't right. I'm not vaccinated. I feel like I just came out of the closet tonight. I feel like I've been like a closet girl or something and I came out of the closet tonight, because I feel so, like, it's so refreshing to just, like, state it and say it publicly. And this just will fall where they will, but I'm not planning on it. And, you know, my kids are thinking it and, you know.
And I drew this.
I just wanna live my life in peace. I just wanna.